Call our special call meeting to order of the City Commission, January 14th, 2008. Call roll please.
Steven?
Here.
Shran?
Here.
O'Neil?
Here.
Neil?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Oh.
Here.
We have corn, thank you. Number one, authorize staff to hire monitors for the debris removal contract to meet FEMA requirements for reimbursements. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Don Lynch, Emergency Management Director. I had hoped to have a PowerPoint presentation for you, but the computer has locked up, so I'm going to have to reboot it. So I'll just give this to you verbally if you don't mind at this point. Let me start this process. Go again, so when we get to SEDF, it should be up and running. Six issues real quickly to go over with you this evening. The first one is debris monitoring for the debris removal. We had a couple of options to look at, either contracting with a company to provide that service, and I visited with Corps of Engineers and FEMA folks last week about the possibility of doing that, and had a sample contract sent to us to look at that. At the same time that we had our meeting, we visited a little bit more about a new pilot program that FEMA is instituting. Be the first time that we have done this in a disaster in Oklahoma since the pilot program came out. And under this new pilot program for debris removal, force account labor would be eligible for regular, that is, their normal duty time, and overtime. And so, the staff recommendation based upon that would be to allow us to hire seasonal workers, treat them as staff. The advantage to doing that is we'll get to pump some money back into the local economy by hiring personnel from the local area. We asked our human resources personnel to take a look at, would the labor market support that? And they made calls and said, yes, it would, that we would be able to find qualified candidates to do that. So, we would need 42 personnel to accomplish that based upon the projections that the debris removal company has given us, that they would have 20 crews in town working. With the 20 locations around the city, plus the one debris dump site, that would mean we would need 21 people a day to work that contract. The reason for doubling that is that, under the seasonal hire regulations, we would only hire those personnel for less than 39 hours a week. So if we're running Monday, or seven days a week, we would need a group of people to work four days a week, a group of people to work three days a week.
And we're okay with fair labor standards?
We're okay with the Fair Labor Standards Act by doing it that way. Yes, sir. Our proposal would be to pay those workers $10 an hour with no benefits for that time that they were working. They would be basically working up to a maximum of nine hours a day. The reason for the additional hour would be drive time to come in, to sign in, to receive their equipment, to get to the debris site, and time to start the work when the monitoring, or when the removal company gets there. And then, once the removal company's through for the day, there would be a 30-minute period for them to drive back in, turn in their equipment for the day, and then go home. So it would be a maximum of a nine-hour day for that work. We have set some criteria based upon what some other cities are doing. That employee would have to be 18 years old, would have to have a valid driver's license, would have to have reliable transportation, because they are going to be following the crews roving throughout the community, and no criminal history, because they're going to be containing, or carrying the load tickets, which in essence are similar to a blank check for that removal company. Every time they get one of those, it's going to recite the dollars. So it's going to be accountable property that the debris monitor would be accountable for. Estimating the nine hours a day, four days a week, with the two groups, just looking at eight weeks to update, to do the removal, and that's our best guess at this point, two months to get that done, we'd be looking at $105,840 in labor cost for that time period. The additional costs that we can calculate at this point would be, we'd need to provide them with a hard hat and a safety vest. So when you figure that for 42 people, that's an additional $554.40 that would be needed to cover that safety equipment. Since they're going to be out there on the site, we would need to provide them with that equipment. So our recommendation would be to ask for your permission to go out to hire the seasonal workers to perform this monitoring work. They would be supervised by City of Shawnee regular staff. We would sign them in, sign them out every day, sign them their communications radios, and then monitor their activities during the day on a roving basis. In addition to that, our safety officer, as they're out, as he is out going through the city on the various other projects, he will be going by there just to check on them as well. So we'll have a pretty good supervision of the monitors to make sure everything's being handled well with that. So, again, that's our recommendation. We would use, and we can, because we use the City of Shawnee force account labor for supervising that, that would be an eligible activity as well, under the new pilot program that's coming out with FEMA, so we'll be able to get the reimbursement for that time as well. I don't have a cost figure for you on that yet, because I was receiving a list of employees that would be willing to work overtime this afternoon, and as soon as we get that, then we can put a schedule together. Because of the flexible pay rates, the overtime would vary, so we haven't been able to calculate that yet. But that is something that we can calculate, once we get the schedules and make those assignments to you. So, we would be coming back at your next meeting, which is the 15th of this month, with a, I believe it's the 15th, I'm sorry.
22nd.
22nd, thank you. 15th is tomorrow, that's, yeah, I did, anyway, I want to do that. I wonder why you was looking at me strange. 22nd, sorry. To request a supplemental budget transfer. The City Treasurer and I will be working on those figures, so we can come back to that with you at that time. So basically, what we're asking for tonight is the permission to hire those seasonal employees. And then, I also have some other issues, just to bring you up to speed on that, if you want me to go ahead and do that now, if you want to take action, ask questions on the seasonal.
I have a question.
Okay.
So this is contract labor?
Yes.
And workers' comp and other liability, are we covered somewhere in a blanket?
It wasn't going to be contract.
We're going to hire them as seasonal employees, so it would be under our workers' comp?
For a short period of time.
For a short period of time.
And how did you arrive at $10 an hour?
That's our lowest labor rate that we pay a maintenance one employee coming into the City of Shawnee. I will tell you that I found a crew working in Tulsa yesterday. I was up visiting my mother, and we went to church, and there was a crew working in the neighborhood. So after church, I went by and asked them a little bit about what they were doing there. City of Tulsa's paying their people $15 an hour, so I would think that, given the differential in cost of living, between the two cities, that $10 would be about a right figure for us to utilize here.
Okay.
So that's truly the minimum?
That is truly the minimum.
We're going to pay, we're going to pay $10 an hour, and they're covered by workers?
That's correct. If they get injured, they would be covered.
So do you feel confident enough about the paperwork system, since these seasonal workers will be our monitors, that the paperwork system is in place and is full proof, because this is our reimbursement?
Yes, ma'am. We have had the load tickets printed, that each ticket is numbered, they are in a book, so that they cannot be separated. I have those, they are locked up. We will be doing an accounting, because we have to, anyway. We will be doing an accounting with someone from the Finance Department, accounting for each ticket number and verifying that each ticket number sequentially is in that order, just as we do with the law enforcement ticket books citations that officers issue. Our debris monitors will be assigned that book, they will sign for it, it will be accountable property. They will have to turn in a copy of that ticket for each one that they write. The tickets are four parts, so one part stays with the load monitor, three parts go with the truck driver from the load site to the dump. At the dump, the truck is weighed in, weighed out. A copy of that ticket is kept with the debris monitor at the dump site, they have to turn those in daily. The other two copies of the ticket go back with the contractor. The contractor utilizes one of those copies for their purposes, and would submit the third copy to us with their invoice, along with a daily report. So that way, we have three copies of the ticket to verify against, and make sure everything's covered that way.
Okay.
I have a question.
And who's responsible for the training of these people?
We will train those people.
Because, I mean, let's be realistic. We're talking about people that are responsible for ensuring that our city
Absolutely.
Gets reimbursed.
Gets reimbursed.
So, we know that, like, Joe Blow off the street making $10 an hour, who hasn't made $10 an hour in a long time, knows how to do this.
We had FEMA and the Corps of Engineers come in last week and train several of our employees, and I will be conducting that for our monitors that we hire, I will conduct that same training. I have the PowerPoint slides, and we can do that with them. The employees that we trained last week, then, would be eligible to serve as our supervisors, who will be go out monitoring that activity, so.
So we have, and this is truly, like, a military term, we have "train the trainer."
Absolutely.
We're doing "train the trainer."
We're "train the trainer."
We've been trained, we know how to train the trainer, and we're going to train the trainer so that we ensure we get reimbursed.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why can't we use some of these inmates? We are feeding them, and helping, and everything, you say, use our money, tax pay's money.
It runs into a couple of issues relating to the safety of those inmates, and also then the accountability for the accountable property. They're criminal. And so, they can't, we don't want them handling accountable property that equates to dollars for the City of Shawnee. But it's a good thought. It's not, it's not like we're just going out and picking up trash, unfortunately, because it's tied to the dollars from the FEMA reimbursement.
Cool. I have a question on this, on the eight weeks, and the figure that you come up. I guess my question would be here, if we run into some other kind of catastrophe, like more ice or something comes in, we're talking about eight weeks, and this $105,000. If you only go out there for six weeks, and then something else comes along, we got something else to deal with at later time, is that correct?
That's correct. And the issue then would become proving which disaster the debris is tied to. And that's why we're going to be sending out crews from the city for the next few days. Our forces are going to be going, driving the grids of the streets, and giving us a rough estimate, length, width, and height of all the piles that are out there. So we have a good estimate of how much is out there. The FEMA inspector, our project officer, is here tomorrow as well with us, and we'll be taking him around, showing them the damage that's out there, so they have an idea. The issue then becomes, you're absolutely correct, is to which disaster does it tie to, and the decision will have to be made at that point. The FEMA folks will work with us very closely on that. They have, and we got into the same thing in the flooding issues in the three previous disasters. We had some road damage, and it was, was it in this disaster or the second disaster where it was damaged? And they were very good to work with us on making sure it was covered.
Is our contractor waiting on us to hire these 42 people now?
Yes, that, and to sign the contract for the dump site.
Okay.
Which is the other, one of the other updates that I had for you, when we get to that point.
Okay.
What we plan, I will tell you that what we plan to do initially, if you give us the approval to do this tonight, is as soon as we get the dump site contract finalized, we have the three debris management sites, the airport, the park and ride, and the Dockry Park, that we've talked with our contractor about, and using our force account, our existing employees, we're going to go ahead and start the removal from those locations with the contractors, and get that process started, so we don't hold them up any longer. They can go ahead and start their work. And then, within a week, we have the employees hired, trained, be ready to go, then they can bring in their full 20 crews and start that process.
Okay. Are there additional testing requirements for these 42 people that are to be added to the cost, or is that just negligible?
It's, yeah, it's, it'll be the cost of our time just training them in here, and so that's, will be
Drug tests, those kinds of things?
No, nothing required for that.
So, and you're asking for authorization to hire these monitors? You were going to go on, is there something else you need to tell us?
I have four other issues as it relates to where we're at in the process, nothing relating to the monitors. So, the second thing was where we're at with the debris disposal site contract. Utilizing the Canadian Valley landfill out at Earlsboro, our dump fees will be $8 per tonne to dump out there, and we're trying to figure out, how do we get an estimate of how much is going to be out there? I think we'll be able to come up with a little bit better figure after we do the grid searches. We'll have a little bit better idea of the quantity of debris. Now, we'll have to transfer that to tonnage and look at the idea. So our problem right now is how to, it's sort of going to be an open-ended request to you at your next meeting for funding the dump fees. Ms. Tribler and I are going to work on trying to come up with a way to quantify that. We don't have that right now, and, and so, we're just going to try to get a handle on that. I wanted to let you know about that tonight, so.
So, what we approved last week was only for the contractor's labor?
Was only, yes, ma'am.
For picking up and hauling, it was not the dump fees?
It was not the dump fees, and it was not the monitoring fees.
And we're negotiating it yet.
We have some contract language that we need to amend, and when I get through here this evening with you, I'm going to go downstairs, and I've visited with Brent Bowles from Allied Waste this afternoon, and we understand the differences that we have, and I'm going to submit some new language to him, take a look at tomorrow, and I think we can wrap up that contract, run it back by Mr. Canavan as well, so when we get that done.
When's Mr. Bowles going to be here, tomorrow?
No. I'm going to send the contract language to him, Mr. Bowles is not coming tomorrow, so. You wanted to talk to him, didn't you?
He was going to be around, actually, in person.
I appreciate that.
To discuss many things. Okay.
The next thing that I had for you was, we want to make sure, because the questions keep coming up, well, when are you actually going to get around to doing the removal? The contractor has a schedule of the 20 crews that are going to be out, and has divided the city into sectors. We'll take that map and work with them to try to come up with a schedule of when they're going to start, where they're going to start. And the idea behind doing the 20 sectors is, it allows us to cover more of the city, all of the city, in a faster manner. Instead of just working one area and making your way through the city, we're going to be concentrating in all sectors of the community to get everybody covered as quickly as possible. So, as soon as we get that schedule formulated, we will advertise it in the Shawnee New Star, the Shawnee Sun, we will post it on the city website, we will list it on Cable Channel 30, we'll have it posted here at City Hall, we'll do everything that we can to get the word out to as many people as possible about the schedule as soon as that's finalized. Again, that's pending getting everything else put in place. Yes, ma'am, question?
And I'll say, there's 20 crews in 20 sectors, that's truly going to be across the City of Shawnee?
Yes, ma'am.
And I only ask this because I think I'm the only person on this city council that can ask this question. When it came to electrical recovery, I was the last person here to get electric service, and it truly, I mean, it didn't seem to be fair across the city.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that.
And I can say, I mean, I can say that, because I was the last one on the City Commission to get electric.
Yeah.
But it truly wasn't fair when you looked at who got service within Shawnee. And I didn't complain, I didn't write, well, I did, amongst myself and my own family, and yeah, 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 yeah. But truly, when I looked at what was fair, I could go somewhere else, and I could go to a hotel, and I could go, and I could take care of myself, but there were parts of Shawnee that didn't get electrical service in a timely fashion, and there were other parts of town that did. So my concern is, are we truly going to be fair here, or are we going to take care of certain parts of Shawnee and not certain parts of Shawnee?
I can't address, yeah.
And I'm not trying to be derogatory in any way, I just want to make, let's just be fair here.
Absolutely.
You know what? The middle of town didn't get electric service, and that's okay, because you know what? I don't need my limbs taken away, and we'll take care of our limbs, but there are parts of Shawnee that need service.
Yes, ma'am. And that was our intent.
Are we going to be fair?
Yes, ma'am. And I will tell you that Mr. Sims with the contractor is here tonight, I don't know if you have, you have the map with you?
Okay.
Did not bring it, but we, that is one of the things, and you want to, you want to address this question if you'd like to. The idea is 20 sectors across the city to be fair, is that correct, sir?
We're going to be fair, right? And we're going to hit all of Shawnee.
We have more control than utilities.
Well, and you know what? No, hey, my house is good. My house is good, because I made Allied Waste carry my stuff away, because they're my trash people.
Last to get electric, first to get your tree removed.
I can't
I was, because I put them in those trash cans out there, and they're going to take them away on Wednesdays. But my concern is, I just want to make sure that we're being fair, and that we're not picking parts of town that we provide services to, because that apparently was so with the electric, kind of maybe, I don't know, but I just want to make sure that we're fair. You know, I don't want us to pick the, you know what, you live in a $100,000 home, so your limbs get picked up first, because you have a quote "pretty" yard. I want everyone in Shawnee to have equal access to recovery from the storm, because it doesn't matter if you pay $20,000 for your house, or you pay $200,000 for your house, you still pay for your house. And I just want it to be fair.
We have it divided into 20 sectors.
Okay.
And you can put one crew in each sector, and they'll all start within a day or two of each other. All of them taking up, then they truck in each or town, picking up at the same time.
So we're going to see recovery
It doesn't matter who lives where, be it President's house, it doesn't matter. If he had more crews and more limbs, we'd like him better, probably, because we're all about time. We'll have someone each sector picking up.
Okay.
And if somebody finishes theirs early, they'll move over to the one adjacent to them down there, so where somebody is in the bad spot.
So truly, we're going to, when we start this, we're going to cover Shawnee. We're not going to start on the north side and move south, and we're going to not start on the east side and move west. We're going to cover Shawnee to where it doesn't matter where you live.
We're going to have shotgun start.
You're going to get service.
Understand that.
It's going to be fast, what you've been talking about, too, so much is being followed in Dockry Park. We see trucks picking up, and the interstate, the other dumps around, and the trees actually diminished.
Oh, it absolutely is. And I can say, I mean, I can drive around town, but you know what, I can spot people in my neighborhood that I know need help.
Absolutely.
And I guess my concern is, some of the less fortunate areas in our community need help, and I don't want us to come in and take care of the more fortunate areas at the exclusiveness of them. Okay, so we truly are going to cover our community, and we're going to see a community-wide sweep as opposed to a, we're going to move north and go south, or, okay.
I think she said they're going to be fair, so.
We're going to cover our community, which is great, and I think that's wonderful.
We get it. We get it.
You know what?
He's going to be fair, he just said that.
Okay, Chuck, but you know what? You live in a fortunate side of town, and Marvin does not.
I'm like you, I handle my own limbs.
Exactly. I was fortunate, too, but there's a lot of people that can.
I agree with you. They're going to do 20 sections, it's all going to be fair.
And the point is, to make everyone understand, we're going to cover our community and be fair.
Point made.
And the other point was, to not just make one round within the sector.
There will be two passes.
That was the other thing that we've had requests for.
And I'll tell you the reason for that. When I saw this yesterday, the crew that was working in Tulsa, they had cleaned one mile section during the time I was in charge. When I came back, I started back there where I saw them, and they'd progressed to the next mile section, but in that mile section that they had, were cleaning on, there were people already dragging back out their second batch of limbs from their yards.
They had room.
So we know, because they didn't have room.
Right.
So that's why the idea is behind doing the second pass, absolutely.
There's going to be two passes.
Two passes.
Yeah, and please add that to the notification that's posted everywhere, so that people know.
I do that with the caveat that please don't wait for the second pass to bring your debris out.
Right, right.
If you can do it out there now, please get it out there now, because it'll help us, okay? But I will do that.
Do you also consider using the radio, TV for PSEs?
Yes, yes, sir, we will. We'll contact KIRC and KGFF as well. I know they have local community shows, and we'll give the information to them as well. We'll blitz that as much as possible.
Mr. Lynch, I want to also mention that this area right across on South Street, I don't know how many areas are being used like that, but they use it as a dump site. People come from different other areas to just, and I want to know if they're going to take those, go up there and take those limbs, to say some people have used that as a dump site.
The debris, that was my next point on here, I'm glad you're, you're helping me with the segue.
Thank you.
The debris removal is from public property only. If it's a vacant lot, we will not, the city will not be paid for removal of tree limbs from private property. If it's a city managed debris site on city property, that's one story. But the vacant lots, like you were talking about, Commissioner, where people have piled stuff, that will, that is not eligible under this debris removal contract with FEMA. So we're asking the public, please not to do that, to put them at the curbside where we can get them, okay?
Before you go, so, what do we do about that property where that stuff is right now? It's on private property, it's not a dump site, it was very clean. In fact, they're proposing to put a liquor store there.
Yeah.
It was very clean. Now it's become a dump site. How do we address getting that cleaned up from the public guy? Because the owner didn't put it there, he didn't know it was put there, it's his property, we understand, it's going to be his responsibility to move it at some point. If it's pulled to the curb, will it be picked up?
If it's pulled to the curb, it can be picked up, and that may be something that we have to look at. Some volunteers that can help do that, otherwise it will have to be an issue that's addressed by the code enforcement personnel. I will just say for right now that the removal is only from public property, so please don't, don't, for the dump.
Designated dump sites.
Designated dump sites.
Can I make an observation? This is going to be an imperfect process.
Yes.
There are going to be glitches, there are going to be people that don't really understand all the instructions, and we're going to have to deal with some of those. Now, having said that, that doesn't mean it's okay to ignore the process, because it could go on forever. And at some point in time, we owe it to the citizens, and frankly, FEMA is going to require us to say, no more, we're done now, okay? And so it gets back to what Don says, yes, we'll do two sweeps through the city, but people, please don't do, wait for the second sweep, because that might not be enough for you. You know, put that out initially. And as to this particular issue, Don's right, if there's a private property that people have been using, then if the owner could get it to the curb line, then we can deal with it. What we can't do is send our crews on to those pieces of property. There's, I have not, there's no cities that are doing that, y'all. Okay, so again, it's going to be imperfect, and we'll, we'll work it through, we'll deal with the exceptions as we can.
Is the chair going to entertain a motion?
Well, if he's down.
One last thing, and then I'll be quiet.
We have that fourth thing to follow.
Okay. The, the, the one last thing that I want to say as it relates to that, we've had a few calls from people, and I've heard of some calls that have come in and saying, the people have registered through the hotline at the state, and they're waiting on FEMA to come, and it's going to, they're going to clean their debris off their property. FEMA will not pay for removal of debris from private property. We, in order for us to take it, we've got to get it to the curbside. If we get a presidential disaster declaration for individuals and families and businesses that were affected, it's still up to that property owner to have the debris removed. FEMA will not pay for that, it's not eligible under the FEMA reimbursement program. So that's why it's important to get it to the curbside, to do that. I'm just trying to get the word out again with everybody, and we'll, as much as we can, we'll utilize the local efforts just to, to make sure that everybody understands that process. It has to come to the public right of way. Okay, and I'm through, unless you have any further questions.
Now entertain a motion. You're the one spoke at.
I'll make a motion to authorize $110,000 to be spent for the hiring of the seasonal workers to work as monitors in the cleanup.
Do we have to put the hundred, the amount in there?
I think you should.
I think
Mike is prudent, and if it starts, if it starts getting over that, then we'll come[1784.41]
Then we'll come back and explain why it's going over.
Yeah. We need to let it happen.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holt.
Okay. I said 110.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed. He said 105 on labor and 5,000 on...
500 for safety equipment.
Okay, so I gave you an answer.
That gives... Thank you for the flexibility.
It's a tip.
No, it's not, but I appreciate the thought.
Call roll, please.
Peterson? Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stran?
Aye.
O'Neil?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don. Number two, authorize staff to advertise for construction bids to implement security measures at the inside water payment window.
We have this in the budget. You have a memo in your packet along with the line item up to 22-9. We talked about it during the budget process last spring, and recommend that we get authorization to bid it. Questions?
I just went and looked at the window over there. It's impressive. Stick your hand in there. It's about inch and a half thick, two inches thick.
It'll look like the water window essentially looks like.
Yeah, it's impressive.
Yeah, we need to do this.
Steel behind the counter as well.
Yeah, and the whole bit. So... Go ahead.
Yeah. I was just asking. Same measures?
Yes, sir. Looks... It'll be very similar in design. Hey, we've already... I mean, we talked about it in spring, so we're just authorizing it.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson, second by Commissioner Stran. Call roll, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stran?
Aye.
O'Neil?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Epstein?
Stevens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. Number three, presentation from Shawnee Economic Development Foundation regarding 2008 budget and strategic planning update. The Marion McMillan Show.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. Looking for Don. Is this thing live again, Don?
Don?
Don, did this thing reboot?
Yes, it should be rebooting.
Okay.
Should just be able to click on them.
Make sure I find which one. It was the... You said it was the XL one? Okay, very good. Thank you. That's the budget.
Cancel that. Click, cancel. Exact one, or cancel. And there's one more on there, strategic planning. Select the one you want. And, okay. We get to fill in the blanks?
Yeah. Well, again, as we start this, let me just give you back a little bit of history. Shawnee Economic Development Foundation, for the last several years, frankly, I believe, has struggled having our entire board, if you will, focused on a common mission. We've had some discussion about just exactly what we wanted to do. And so to eliminate that and start to bring us together and focus on, I believe it was December the 5th, we held a planning session, and we invited Leo Presley from Oklahoma State University to come down and be a monitor for us. And we spent that very effective period of time, sitting down as the board of the foundation, which is made up of approximately 20, 18, 18 individuals that have agreed to serve on that board, and most of them have served for a considerable period of time, sat down and with the help of our monitor, we went through a process of trying to identify what we believed were our top priorities, and develop a program to match those priorities. And what... I'm not sure we're gonna be able to... You have this sheet that talks... The very top of it has strategic initiative, grow and diversify economic base. I know that's in some of the material that you have in front of you. We have it in paper in front of you. Please permission, it's in that stack right there, maybe the third page down, I think. There you go. It's a grid matrix that... This is a document that we worked with. And on the left side of this particular page, we had... We have basically established a total of four different separate goals. And those included create 1,000 net new jobs. We're also talking about enhancing and expanding the Economic Development Foundation's capabilities. Also to concentrate on workforce development, and also for infrastructure enhancement. Those are kinda end up being the four general targeted areas. And then within those, we had specific objectives. And you can look at those objectives that we're looking for, creating new jobs, creating in the industrial sector, creating new jobs as it relates to the retail and service sector, and then enhancing and expanding our... The foundation's capabilities. We were looking at creating and implementing a plan to secure long-term funding sources. That's part of our plan to be with you tonight, of course. Secure funding for retail development specialists. At that time, you all have been taking up the issue of whether or not to spend money as you go out and do a retail study plan. Your representatives on the Economic Development Foundation, that being Commissioners O'Neil and Mills and Peterson, came to us and said, if we go through with this, we need to know what the foundation is prepared to step forward and actually initiate that plan once that study is completed. So that is included in our thought process. Also on creating and implementing more communication, coming back from our group out to the community is what we were trying to do. We also looked at what we needed to do to refocus the foundation, looking at our structure. We're also working on our bylaws to make any changes that would be applicable. And then as we get into workforce development, one of the things we want to make sure we're doing is identifying the needs that the employers have in the market, plan to do so through surveys, and a marketing plan to carry that out. And a lot of emphasis was spent on, we're gonna really have to train and grow our own workforce. And that takes a lot of coordination between the... All the various educational sectors in the community, and then dovetailing those with the jobs that we have at hand. And finally, as it relates to infrastructure development, we wanted to proactively be in a position to support the city's long-term efforts in order to get quality and quantity of water that we need for our community. Define and quantify the rail needs of greater Shawnee area. That's one of the things that we focused on. As a matter of fact, later tonight, you'll hear about... Of course, you read some about the Vanguard services that are coming to town and opening a new business that need rail service. We have plenty of existing businesses that realize and require rail service. We want to make sure that that rail service is efficient, it's timely, and it is reliable. And that's something we're all working on. We have a subcommittee of the foundation that's working on that very thing right now. And then also, there's a statewide initiative that supports that proposal for the half cent of the state sales tax being rebated to the city to be used for these roads and airport infrastructure. So those are the fundamental objectives that we have. Then we go through this process as you look across this material in front of you as to who's accountable for that, how it will be measured, and the target date for its completion. So I think we spent a considerable amount of time talking about that, and then we sat down and tried to assess our ability to do that based upon our organizational structure, also the funding that we have, and then, of course, trying to make a balance, if you will, between the public sector funding, which you all have been providing at the tune of $100,000 a year, and then also the private sector. And by the private sector, in the past, what has been done is we have done unit drives every so often, and those unit drives were really a pledge of so much money, generally payable over a five-year period of time. And so we have a comprehensive plan to go forward, to roll out a new budget, ask for additional support from you folks, as well as others, and then make a simultaneous approach to the business community to also come up with more private dollars. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have just initially from this, but then we would go forward. Randy Smith is here. Randy Smith is the vice chair of the foundation this particular year. He has lent his considerable expertise to help us on putting together a budget this year. And frankly, I think you'll find as we get into that budget, there's a two-page narrative, I hope you've had a chance to read, that goes on the face of that budget. It's an excellent document. Randy did an outstanding job of putting together down on paper in a pretty concise two-page format, our thought processes behind developing that budget. So could I answer any questions, or should we go to presentation of that budget?
Real quick, where are we at on private sector funding?
Um...
Because that's gonna be the big question. Everyone's like, you know, we're giving public dollars. Where are we at on private sector funding?
If I may, Commissioner, included in Randy's comments are the amount of money that we're looking at bringing in new dollars for new money coming into the proposal. Right now, we have, and I'm looking at Pat, I think we have about 42,000 left? We have about 42,000 in what I would call as outstanding prior unit pledges that are being paid out over a period of time. So that's the money, if you will, that's in our receivables in our budget, and those would be paid out over a number of years. The new proposal, as we talk about the budget, we would anticipate making a request and trying to do that, saying, would you agree to pledge this much payable over five years?
Okay. And I understand that, me sitting up here, but I guess my concern is, let's explain to the general public what we mean by pledging and what's left out there.
Okay.
And I guess, because it's somewhat confusing for the average citizen to understand kinda what we're doing here. And I understand it, that maybe we need to explain, we have $42,000 left as unit pledges. People go, what are units?
What are units? Yes, okay.
I mean, what's that mean?
Well, it is a...
So maybe we oughta break it down a little bit.
Okay. The foundation is formed as essentially for... As a corporation. And if you will, the stockholders of that corporation are the unitholders. And instead of really calling that a stock purchase, we have utilized the term units. Units were priced at $100 apiece. And depending on the number of units you have, each and every year for our annual meeting, you actually vote those shares in the form of a proxy or by your presence.
And are units various businesses within our community?
That's correct. They are. They have been units.
And some of those, let's just give like a quick example of those businesses.
Okay. The utilities in town, OGN E and ONG have been major contributors over a long period of time. I believe this starts 1958, Pat, am I correct?
Yeah, forever.
It goes back that long time.
Forever and a day.
So utilities have always been a major contributor to these, and have, not only in the past, but have continued to make annual contributions. The financial institutions in town, the banks have been involved in that for a long period of time. And there have been others.
Our industries.
The hospitals.
Central plastics.
We have manufacturers.
Mills Machine. You all are industry holders, right? Is your business a unitholder?
Yes.
Shawnee Milling.
Shawnee Milling. So what we consider here, in our little tight-knit community, the businesses, the bigger businesses, the bigger entities, whether it's banking or Shawnee Milling, Shawnee adds the "me", I mean, whatever, I mean...
All of those.
Our big industry, the majority of those are what we call...
The unitholders.
Unit holders.
Right.
Okay.
Which essentially has...
Investors.
Investors, and that's it.
Investors into the economic development of our community.
I mean, this is just an education thing.
Right.
I mean, I know all this, but this is important, because people need to understand this. They've invested money, units, $100 increments, in our community.
That's right.
By investing money in this foundation to continue to cause growth within our community.
Absolutely.
Without expecting, by the way, without really expecting a direct return, because those shares or units are like, I mean, they're like buying shares.
Yeah.
They're never gonna cash in and expect to get a value out of it.
They're not gonna be able to cash in.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, that's just...
They wouldn't...
It's a donation, really, really, to economic development in this community.
And I'd also say that...
And they expect a return, because they expect our community to grow.
That's exactly right. I would say that the best analogy that I can think of for what everybody's motivation is, is that if we are, in fact, able to grow jobs and grow sales tax revenue and improve the city, expanding population, a rising tide will, in fact, rise all boats. So my bank, other businesses that we're talking about, will all have more business, will all be collecting more sales tax dollars. You all will be able to spend that money...
We all benefit.
For infrastructure development, so the process can continue. So that's the theory behind all of that. It is, and I would be very frank to say, that, you know, the unit thing has been awkward, because then you talk about stockholders and, you know, investment.
Right.
And it's really, like you said, it's a financial commitment, but it is certainly not saleable or tradable or anything like that. It's basically an investment in the community.
Okay. And that's important to know.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And it needs to be, and we recognize that it needs to be. While it may not be 50/50, we definitely believe it's very important that the private sector step forward and take part in this process. You're very welcome. Okay. Any other specific questions, or I'm gonna ask Randy to come up, and we're gonna go through the budget. Randy Smith?
Good evening. Trying to see if there's a way I can make this a little bit bigger on this version. Okay, let's try that. May make it a little bit easier to see. As you saw in your information put in your packet, we did have to split this budget into two time periods. And that's basically because of the difference in the fiscal years of the foundation and the city. The foundation has a calendar year-end, December 31st. City has a June 30th fiscal year-end. And so because we're basically coming to the city and asking for an increase in our contract with the city, we knew that couldn't be effective until July 1st. And so that's why that is... Information has been split between the two years. I'll point out the revenue first. You can see right there, January-June, the $50,000. That is one-half of a year of the current contract between the city and the foundation. I'm gonna move right over here to July through December, the $98,000. That's basically one-half of the annual contract that we're proposing would become effective July 1st, a $196,000 contract. And so basically, it's obvious going from $100,000 a year to $196,000 a year, that is an increase of $96,000 per year that the foundation would be requesting in the new contract with the city. And I'm gonna go back to Commissioner Stevens' question, how is the private sector then stepping forward? And that's right here in this budget, the unit pledges that you see here, some in January through June, majority $76,000 almost in July through December. And that's weighted more towards the back of the year, because it's going to take us some time to get the unit pledge drive going. There are some legal issues. I shouldn't say the word "issues." There are some legal hoops you have to jump through. You have to send a letter to the Oklahoma Securities and Exchange Commission, get approval from them, and so we'll have to go through those steps here in the next several months. Also, there's some minor income issues, parts here, interest income and rental income. Those are basically continuing items that we've had in the past, and we continued those into this budget. Move over to the total for the year, where you can see basically with the combination That is one-half of a year of the current contract between the city and the foundation. I'm going to move right over here to July through December, the ninety-eight thousand dollars. That's basically one-half of the annual contract that we're proposing would become effective July thirty-first, or July first. A one-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-dollar contract. And so basically, it's obvious going from a hundred thousand a year to a hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars a year, that is an increase of ninety-six thousand dollars per year that the foundation would be requesting in the new contract with the city. And I'm going to go back to Commissioner Stevens' question, how is the private sector then stepping forward? And that's right here in this budget, the unit pledges that you see here, some in January through June, majority seventy-six thousand dollars almost in July through December. And that's weighted more towards the back of the year because it's going to take us some time to get the unit pledge drive going. There are some legal issues, I shouldn't say the word issues, there are some legal hoops you have to jump through. You have to send a letter to the Oklahoma Securities and Exchange Commission, get approval from them, and so we'll have to go through those steps here in the next several months. Also, there's some minor income issues, parts here, interest income and rental income, those are basically continuing items that we've had in the past, and we continued those into this budget. Move over to the total for the year, where you can see basically with the combination of the two six-month periods, a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand from the city, twelve thousand five from contracts with others. We believe it's also important for the foundation to step out and try to seek economic development contracts with other entities as well. And so we've included that in the budget. Unit pledges, there's ninety-six thousand dollars, and that is basically, what we're proposing to you is an equal share in the increase here in the revenue, ninety-six thousand dollars additional from the city and ninety-six thousand dollars that would be raised annually from the private sector. I'm going to scroll down and go down to the, that revenue item from the private sector. This is one example that you're asking, where does that private sector money come from? Here is one sample of how that can be raised. We basically went out there and said, we believe that we can find twenty business entities or individuals who would be willing to pledge two thousand dollars each on an annual basis over a five-year period, which would raise forty thousand dollars a year. We think we can go out and find thirty individuals or entities that would pledge a thousand dollars a year, raising thirty thousand dollars a year. Forty individuals or businesses that would be willing to pledge five hundred, and then sixty that would be willing to pledge a hundred a year. And that is one example of how we can reach that ninety-six thousand dollar private sector investment in economic development here in Shawnee. Other entities, Commissioner Stevens, I can tell you about, for instance, OBU makes an investment in the community. Every year, we've paid two thousand dollars to the Economic Development Foundation as a part of our budget out at OBU to help with economic development in the city of Shawnee. Because we do believe, as Marion said, that the rising tide will lift all ships. Questions on, and this doesn't have to be this way, you know, if we had somebody come in and say, I'm willing to pledge fifty thousand dollars a year for five years, then we're all going to celebrate.
Yeah.
And then try to get a hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars instead of just ninety-six.
So is this private sector revenue estimate truly an estimate, or are these pledges that we've lined up?
We do not have pledges lined up at this point in time. We think it is achievable.
And I want to believe, and you know what, I'm a big fan of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and I want to believe we can do this, but I guess my concern is, we can believe all we want. How does it stack up to-
Past pledge drives.
Exactly. How do we stack up?
That's a question.
I mean, we want to believe this is going to happen. Can we really produce this kind of money?
What was the amount of pledges last received?
Last time around, when we went and did a pledge drive, remember, we haven't done one for a number of years.
Right.
We collected three hundred thousand dollars, and that was pledged we paid over a number of years.
Okay. Out of all the entities that, out of all the entities that pledged that, did they have like five years to pay so much?
Yes, that's true. Most of them, most of them just, what we did, I know like in our own, our bank situation, there had been a previous fund drive, and we had pledged so much, and it was so much per year for five years. I believe there was like maybe two years left of that particular pledge. We came around, did another pledge, and basically what we did is says, yes, we'll pledge this much, and we'll just continue to pay that out in so much a year going forward. But the last time we had a unit pledge, which was since I've been here, was it about two thousand? Two thousand is when we did one. And at that point in time, some of the money that you still see that's being collected is pledges that are still running out.
Well, we've had a lot of new businesses open since two thousand. Are they automatically requested to pledge?
No, no. Well, no, because part of it is, is because of our structure, we do, and it's essentially looked at as being a solicitation for stock. We have to prepare perspectives, and we have to get permission from the Oklahoma Securities Commission in order to go out and make a stock offering, or a unit offering. So we have waited until we were prepared, and then we'll go out and make the presentation. And it would be anticipated, like I said, we've got a lot of things going on with, within the foundation right now, new budget being proposed, takes time for you all to do that, takes time for us. We also have bylaws issues that we're trying to update, bring those current, and at the same time, organizing a pledge drive.
Well, in reality, you're going to gain some and you're probably going to lose some.
That's always the case. It is, certainly.
So this type of situation has not been done since two thousand?
The unit drive pledge has not been done since two thousand.
Okay. Okay. And that was, I'm glad you, I'm glad you said that, unit drive, because the unit drive is the private sector revenue drive.
Absolutely.
And that has not been done in now-
Since two thousand.
Eight years. I mean, that's, that's quite a long time.
Right. And the amount of money that you see in the budget that Randy had in front of you, which I think was included, there was twenty thousand dollars or so of that, remaining forty-plus thousand dollars in unit pledges, that will in fact be coming in and is receivable, will be returned to cash this year.
So are these conservative estimates? I would hope.
I would put it this way, to me, to me, the issue comes down is, is just like you all, we're here trying to convince you that we have a plan of action that deserves your support. I mean, and so-
Right.
The exact same thing is going on from the public sector. We have a group of eighteen board members that will in fact become our unit drive participants, leaders. And we have a plan, just very much like this one. You've all participated in campaign drives of one kind or another. It's a very simple process of going forward and trying to identify your audience, and our audience is the entire community, and the greater Shawnee community, I might add, whether or not they do or don't live within the city limits. Someone that lives outside the city limits, by the fact that their business is located out, they're going to have that same tide, hoping rising their boat as well. So it'd be our intention to make this Greater Shawnee effort to look at all businesses. Now, you'll have some that said, no, I don't choose to participate, that's fine, but we have many others to ask. This is just one example of how we think we can put together with essentially having a hundred-and-fifty contributors out of the total-
Right.
-potential out there to raise ninety-six thousand dollars a year.
Fair enough. You have eighteen businesses on the board, roughly?
Well, that includes, that includes the representatives from the city.
Okay.
And then it includes-
Say fifteen.
We have-
Less than that. But I guess my point is, look at that twenty at, and of course, I can't see that far.
I'm sorry.
You know, and I, I don't know. You know, I have these bifocal contacts, but it's like-
It's here on your paper.
At, you know, two thousand dollars. I guess my point is, really with the people that sit on the board and the businesses, not the people, but the businesses, that's a big chunk of money already. And I guess, other than, you know, the city people.
And all of those, those-
And so that's, that's pretty phenomenal.
All those unitholders and those board members have been long-term contributors to this process.
Exactly. And I guess my point is, that's very encouraging to think that we have a large group of businesses that, you know, okay, fifteen at two thousand dollars, okay, that's thirty thousand dollars. That's a big chunk of money.
There's a good base.
There's a good base to start working at here. And so when I say it's a speculation on your part, that's good speculation if we really think all these people are going to do this, and then we're going to work from there to reach out to smaller businesses and smaller industries and smaller people.
It makes it easier when you, you know, when you contribute, it's easy to go out and say, look, I've done this at my level, and we're asking for your help as well.
Right. I mean, you know, you know, as a private business owner, you know, myself, it's hard for me to say, okay, I'm in comparison to Bank First. I mean, I'm not going to be able to give as much money as Bank First.
Did you give a hundred dollars?
Absolutely.
There you go.
And that's, and that's the key right there is, you know what, I could probably-
This is being recorded.
Well, no. And I could probably do more than that. And I guess that's my point is, let's all look at this and say, we have-
We can do this.
-big industry in Shawnee able to do this. Come on, let's work down from there and look at private business owners, personal insurance people, and you know what?
It's doable.
It's doable.
It is very doable, and like I said-
It's doable, but we have to reach out.
Oh, absolutely.
And we truly, and you know, of course, Pat, you're back over there, you've got to, you've got to pick up the phone and ask.
Sure. Absolutely. It is a process.
I mean, I can make the phone call, but we've got to pick up the phone call and say, hey.
It is, and it is, it all talks about cooperation, and it talks about believing in the plan. And I would go on to say, and as Randy talks about the budget, we spent, we had a, our meeting the other day when we approved the budget, we had the executive committee work on the budget through two work sessions, very much like the ones you have. Then we had over a, close to a three, three-and-a-half hour board meeting, where again, we considered that, we had unanimous vote on the part of our board to support this budget and the plan to carry it forward. So all of that goes with saying is that we hope to demonstrate to you that there is a lot of enthusiasm by that board to carry forward this plan. We likewise are, are just as enthusiastic ourselves about being those fundraisers that goes out and raises the unit pledge, so that there is a true private-public partnership, and that's what we hope to do.
Absolutely. And I guess my concern here is that there's just kind of this mentality in Shawnee that we have these certain big industries, and whether we consider ourselves big globally or not, but for Shawnee, America, we're big, and we know who we are, and it's not my business, but that the, the small-town business owner is not a part of it. And I think it's important on something like this for them to know that they are, and that we're all in this together, and it's not the big plants and the big companies and the big people that make lots of money versus all the rest of us. It's all of us together. And I think, you know, the idea that someone can contribute a hundred dollars and make a difference, they need to know that when they make a hundred-dollar contribution, they're part of SEDF. It's not only the people that have their pictures up on the wall, they're part of SEDF. And that is so important, because if we don't have all of this, this community is absolutely going to die. And I just, you know what, it's just, it's so easy to say, we're all about, you know, Wolverine and Central Plastics and TDK and, sorry Chuck, Mills Machine and Arvis. I mean, but, and you're one of the little guys in the whole group, but you know what, it's truly, it's so hard to say, you know, these are the big power brokers. Well, you know what, you're really not. Because if you don't have the insurance company and the retail store and Beaufort White's, Family Dollar, whoever, I mean, whoever you are, we're not going to make it. And so I think it's, you know, that hundred-dollar contribution from, you know, Pam Stevens Attorney at Law, that's a big deal. We have to get those. So, okay, that's, I'm off my soapbox now, because I just think it's so important.
You're preaching to the choir, we all like hearing this.
And that's why it's important to see the spreadsheet there. Those people out there need to understand that, and that is so important. SEDF is not just about people that have more than ten employees.
And we can take more than sixty out of a hundred, so that's not just the limit.
Exactly. We need a whole bunch of hundreds.
But it's important to show that the plan is built on everything, not just the twenty at the top. It's built on everything. And I think that's, looking forward, that's what the board and any other member in town can support, is that this, this is about development, economic development for Shawnee.
And you don't have to be industry with what we think. You know, I think the problem is, we all think of industry as you're a plant and you're producing something, and you're, you know, producing widgets. That's not industry, and that's not economic development, which is not what SEDF is about, it's just widgets. If they were about widgets, the banks wouldn't be involved. So, okay, all you private business owners, get out there and pay your hundred dollars.
I'd like to inject our position as the Board of Commissioners.
Oh, no.
I'm concerned with the bump from a hundred thousand a year to a hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand a year, being the taxpayers' burden. And I understand the Economic Development Foundation is run by the industries in town. They're, they're the backbone of the foundation, correct? Other than the people at, our board members. But we have to answer to the taxpayers. And if Joe Citizen's going to say, we're giving a hundred grand a year now, you want to double that. Why? What's in it for me?
That's part of the plan.
I think we can, I think we can show you why. Pardon? I think we can show you why.
Okay.
And that goes back to the strategic planning part that Marion mentioned about expanding the capabilities of the Economic Development Foundation. Right now, we have one staff person. And I'm just going to tell you, if, if we do not receive the increase in funding, and if for some reason the private sector said, well, if the city's not willing to put money into it, then why should I? And we get no increased funding, then we're going to hobble along, just like we have for years, with one person trying to do everything.
Well, you could turn that coin over and say, the city could say, well, if the industry isn't going to back you up, we won't. Why should we back you up?
Sure. But you have had the industry out there doing it. I checked with Pat.
But you have to realize, we have to answer to the taxpayers.
Sure.
We're the only buffer between the taxpayers and City Hall.
Well, you guys are, and I mean, it doesn't take rocket science to look around and look at the competition that we have in the cities that are growing, and even at the five percent, and I brought this up several months ago, and we're going to discuss it again, I'm sure, here, but even at two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand a year, which is the five percent of the seven-eighths of a penny, that's chump change in the economic development world and the business world on the level we're playing at. You think about major corporations, the city Shawnee is like a major corporation trying to compete with other corporations our own size, like Honka City, Ardmore, Bartlesville, Duncan, you know, just name them all, it's in our little sixteen-city comparison. And, you know, some of them have gotten way more serious by dedicating a half-cent sales tax, which generates somewhere between a million or two million dollars a year for some of those communities. And, you know, we're frankly been limping along here with very little money. And if we're going to be competing to bring better-paying jobs and better-paying wealth-building opportunities for our citizens, you know, if we're, that's our, one of our tasks, is bringing opportunity here, the quality of life, this is one way that we can do that. This is an investment into the future for our kids, try to keep them here with better-paying jobs. It's, there, you know, there's some things going to fall in off the highway. Some things are going to fall in off, out of Oklahoma City. But we need to be able to direct that as part of our retail study and other types of businesses. But if we don't take charge here, if we don't control our own destiny, we're never going to move forward. Jim, you brought it up exactly.
This hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars that they're requesting from the city, is that going to trump what the citizens want? They want water, they want to guarantee it's better water, water, enough water. They want parks, they want, you just named, we have a whole laundry list of things that we're trying to prioritize.
If they don't have an opportunity for a good-paying job, though, they're going to leave anyway.
Most of them work outside of Shawnee.
I don't know, there's a lot that lives, that live here and work here.
And to answer your question, there, I think initially, in the very, very beginning, it may compete with some of those things as we go into this first six months of trying to deal with some other, some other projects that we want to do. But, you know, we've talked about this retail analysis, this retail assessment of who we are and trying to bring more in. And, you know, years ago, we probably wouldn't have been having this discussion, but I do think now it's, it is time for us to step out and try to do what we can to develop the retail base within our community that we are currently missing, to be able to capture that so that we can provide more amenities in parks and roads and those kind of, those programs that are kind of coming out of this same one penny.
Well, you can, I don't have any figures in front of me, or I don't even know if they're accessible, but in the last five years, well, the last four years since we've been in office, four of us, you look at the Kickapoo, I-40, Kick, I-40, Harrison, how many businesses have opened up, say between MacArthur going north on Kickapoo and Harrison? There must be dozens, dozens of businesses, which are an increase in sales taxes. And I don't know how many of those were actually brought on by SEDF or City Fathers or City Hall. A lot of them, I think, they have their own studies, they know where to go, they know where they want to open a business, they know where they want to open an industrial plant. But I still, I'm very leery about spending the taxpayers' money bumping it up a hundred percent. Now, we might get away with it, we might not. We're not here to make a decision tonight, we're here to listen to the presentation and get all the facts.
My concern is, is if we bump it up now, are we going to be expected to continue this in every single budget year after this? So that's something we need to consider. I mean, this is a hundred percent increase. So if we do it this year, are we going to be facing this next year and the year after that? Or at some point, are we going to get to a self-sustaining level within SEDF? And I'm a big fan of- And I'm a big fan of, we need to do something about retail in Shawnee. And Lynn and I have both been big fans of this, and we have to. I mean, we have to, or else this community's going to die. We're building rooftops, but we're not sustaining rooftops.
I mean, we have to build what that five percent of seven-eighths is.
Yeah, we have to figure out, I mean, how are we going to sustain this increase from this year? How are we gonna pay for it next year and the year after that, whether it's through tax dollars or it's through SEDF making investments or whatever? Let's think, I mean, we're gonna have to, like...
I don't, I don't think there's any intent to ask for this in the next year and then ask for additional the year after that and additional the year after that.
So if it's infrastructure to hire more people, how are you gonna pay for it next year?
Well, it, the philosophy would be that the contract's increased to a hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars and then continues at a hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars.
Right, so the city continues to pay that?
Yes. I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I thought you were saying that it would go up and up and up.
Yeah, and I guess that's my point, is how is the city gonna continue to pay that when, and I agree with Tom, we have road problems and I'm sorry, I went out across Lake Road Bridge recently, and it still hasn't been dealt with. We have issues within our city that haven't been dealt with, so we kind of have to determine, I mean, how are we going to maintain our standard of life, which is decent roads, decent bridges, sewer drainage problems? We're gonna have an ice storm next week, I'm convinced of it because they said it was gonna snow and I'm sorry and I hate to say that out loud, but I'm convinced of it only because we've had it. How?
The past.
If we do it now, how are we gonna pay for it next year?
Through taxes.
Yeah.
Well, exactly. And how are we gonna get our taxes? Well, we've got to get, you know, our tax base is not good right now and we're not...
But where's our money come from? Eighty percent from retail.
Exactly. And so how are we gonna do that? Can we, well, but you know what Chuck? From this year to next year, we can't bring in enough business to pay the taxes. I mean, you can't, we're not gonna bring...
No, it's not an immediate return, it's a long-term investment.
Exactly. And so it's like, okay, what are we gonna give up between now and then? Are we gonna give up roads? Are we gonna give up bridges? Are we gonna give up drainage? Are we gonna give up jobs in City Hall? I mean, does Phyllis wanna lose her job? No. So we really, I mean, this is such, this is so big.
But it's not a lot more, again, we're, we're collecting roughly about two-twenty-five, two-thirty based on, on our sales right now in economic development. So, it's not a lot more money in that respect.
The past few years, we have, we have spent additional funds out of economic development for special projects that have been in, that have been managed, managed by city staff instead of the staff at SEDF, just because the, the limited, of the ability at the time. And now I think we're asking that some of those studies and some of, some of that extra funding be put directly into SEDF to manage where that money goes. I mean, if you'll look in the budget, part of the plan is that there is funding available for some of those types of projects. I mean, later on in our agenda, there's a budget request for a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. We will find money for that out of whatever the competing projects are or out of our fund balance because that is the right thing to do. Hopefully, with additional funds going to SEDF upfront, they'll have the funds and they'll be able to make those decisions about where that money goes. Does that make sense? They don't have to come to us every time they need fifty thousand dollars to rehab something at the airport or to match an EDA grant or something like that. There may be funds right there because the, there's plans in the budget to, I mean, there's a line item there that they hope to build up to be able to have that, to make those decisions.
How long have you been getting a hundred thousand dollars, Pat? Do you recall how many years?
Probably eight years. Started at fifty thousand, it was over in San Antonio. Three years later, it's eighty thousand.
So about the last seven or eight years has been a hundred thousand dollars. And costs have continued to increase and escalate as they do. So, some of these are normal, but it is, it's more personnel to actually go out and do, do the job because Pat can't do it all by herself. And especially if we dump, we get to this retail thing and we dump that over on SEDF, it's not, I mean, we might as well just put it on the shelf, just like unfortunately a lot of these other studies, what happens to them. And that's the wrong thing to do. And we can't handle it. So, we really need their help and in order to ask for their help, we're gonna have to help support them.
And that's what they do anyway.
It seems to me that I recall years ago, SEDF was funded by the city for salary purposes, basically, to pay the salaries of the people on the salaried positions in SEDF. Is that correct or am I wrong in that assumption?
It wasn't my salaries, it was the prices that it was for the president.
Okay. And now, this extra funding, this bump of a hundred thousand dollars roughly is also gonna be considered to be going towards salaries.
Let me go over the expense budget and, and show you the parts that we're proposing in our, in our expense budget.
Oh, okay.
In the narrative that went with this, it says, "The major area of change in the expense budget is the second major component, salary and benefits. The proposed budget in this component anticipates a new staffing model for the foundation that will allow the foundation to expand its capabilities. The new staffing model includes a staff of three with proposed titles of executive director, program manager, and staff assistant. The funding for the increase in salaries and benefits will be provided by the increase in the contract with the city and the increase in the private sector support." There's still work to be done on that staffing model, but that is, is one of the, that is the major category of increased expenses is going to a three-staff foundation.
Do you have a ballpark figure for the cost of these three new positions?
Because this is a split year, it's, it's not truly annualized. Basically, you can see right here, this is June through, January through June, thirty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty in salary and benefits. And then, we anticipate by July first, having the staff in place, so our salary and benefits go up to a hundred and two thousand, five-seventy for that six-month period. Then a total for the fiscal year two thousand eight, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four-thirty.
But fiscal year two thousand and nine would be more.
Yes, because it would be a full year.
Full year.
Yes.
Real quick, down and nerdy, that's why I like things. Because we know what Pat does. What are we talking about? We have, we have all these titles out here. We're gonna have Pat doing what? Pat McCormick.
The, the board is going to be developing new job descriptions and the new organization chart over the next several months. But we anticipate that there would be three people on the staff and the proposed titles by the executive committee, because it is a change in organization from where we are now, would be executive director, program manager, and staff assistant.
How many salaried positions do you have now?
Two, there is one person.
Executive director, program assistant.
Program manager.
Program manager.
And then a hourly staff assistant. So, two salaried individuals and one hourly individual.
Based upon, and I, I mean, I'll just jump out there, based upon what Pat McCormick does now, where does her position fall into these titles you all are anticipating?
I, I think that's gonna have to be determined by Pat's interest in each of the job descriptions that are going to be developed.
And we haven't developed the job descriptions yet.
The board couldn't develop the job descriptions because we also have to change the bylaws at the same time. And so the, at least one of the bylaw changes will be going to the unit holders in February, which will allow us to then actually take the next step of putting these jobs out on the market.
And it, all of the jobs out on the market re-advertised?
Yes.
For all of the jobs?
Because they're all brand-new positions. It's a complete change in the, the foundation's organizational model.
So we're gonna throw out what we've done for all these years and start all over again?
It's the new improved version.
Shoot from the hip, what the hell?
Shoot from the hip, okay.
The other area that I want to point out to you is this line item right there, business retention recruitment expense, forty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy dollars in this budget. That is basically the part that Commissioner Peterson mentioned about having the money that would then be able to go out there and if there's a carrot that a particular business needs to get here, then we've got a little bit of a carrot. If there's not a particular business that needs a carrot to come here this year, then we save that money until the next year so that we build up our carrot until we can start competing with some of the bigger boys out there.
And that's a carrot that the city's going to hand SEDF, that the city can maintain, and if it was necessary, SEDF could come to the city and say, "We need a carrot."
If that's the way you chose to fund it, absolutely.
So that's just money we would give to you all to be the carrot?
If I may, right now, we have some funds that have been accumulated over a little bit of a period of time from the sales of real estate that we've had in industrial tract. As you know, right now, been dealing with a situation at the airport where looking at rehabbing the old hangar that was part of the Oklahoma Jet Works. Commissioner Peterson and Mills and O'Neill asked us if we were being willing to help them to rehab that particular building because the doors were completely gone on it, the outside of it needed to be cleaned up and that type of thing. So the foundation was approached about contributing fifty thousand dollars toward paying for part of the repairs on the old hangar building. And that commitment has been in fact made by Economic Development Foundation.
When was this request made?
Uh, within the last month or two, something like that.
It was a request by the city. Initially, when...
Requested by the city?
When we were looking at another entity getting into that contract, taking the contract over, and we looked at SEDF and SIA each contributing fifty thousand dollars to rehab the first, or the old hangar, let's just say that.
Navy hangar.
Um, as part of that negotiation, I think we, that was in the, that was in the contract that we looked at with that company and that fell through...
Not with Acorn?
Yeah, that was, that was...
It was with Acorn.
That was Acorn. And that was something that was never brought before the city. When you say asked by the city, it was not asked by the city council, it was asked by the people on the SEDF board maybe.
Right, it's part of the deal.
On, the, the three commissioners that sit on SEDF.
Right.
And not by the city council as a whole. When you say by the city, it wasn't by the city.
Right now, who is the owner of the hangars now? Your bank, right?
Bank first.
No, the hangar, that, the old hangar is owned by the city, is owned by the airport authority or owned by the city. There, it is leased...
Still leased, right.
Through, through a lease to Oklahoma Jet that was since foreclosed on, but my point being is that that is a city asset that will be improved with funds coming from SEDF.
The bank holds the note.
But that request was not by the city as a whole, it was by members of the city commission.
Well, okay, all I'm saying is...
When we were all sitting at the, at the conference table with the presentation that was made, um...
Right, and that was if Acorn became involved.
That's right. That's when they became, that's when they became involved and a motion was made by an SEDF member, I think at that time, to put fifty thousand dollars into the rehab of that.
Right, and that was if Acorn took it.
But you're right, we didn't, we didn't ask.
Well, okay, I guess that's my point, it's like, whoa, come out, did I miss something here?
Yeah, they volunteered.
This was if Acorn did this and Acorn didn't.
That's right.
So that offer's off the table.
But even beyond that, they offered, even after that, that deal went south, they offered to go ahead and put fifty thousand dollars to rehab that building towards economic development.
Okay, but we haven't.
No, we have not, they have though.
Right.
We continue to say that, excuse me, that we didn't have the money to rehab that building.
Right, because we don't.
Well, and the other issue that goes with it, you go back to the strategic plan, one of the focuses of emphasis there is to take great asset the community has, that being the airport, and try to develop more jobs and activity around the airport. And that just dovetails with Gordon Cooper, their training program, you know, trying to enhance and develop that airport so that there are more jobs that are developed out there, again, raising more sales tax dollars, hopefully in, employing more people in the community.
May I ask, do you, do you have a presentation to make?
This guy does right here, we'll finish going through...
If you can, maybe you'll answer some questions, right?
Yeah, and let us write down the questions that we have so you can go through what you have.
I'm reading a lot that I haven't heard about yet.
Well, I think we've covered a lot of it, I can go through the other expense line items. Basically, a lot of this is very similar to what the foundation has had in the past. Very typical things that you're going to see in economic development activities, advertising, work on building site, the chamber contract is a contract with the chamber by which they provide some personal services to us, answer the phone, do accounting work, things like that. Dues and subscription, insurance, obviously with owning property, we have to have insurance, maintenance and repairs of the property. Marketing is one of the big items there at the twenty-six thousand and that's, that's basically where in the past Pat's been going out and going to the different trade shows, doing the things that market the city. Meeting expense, office equipment, office supplies, postage, normal everyday things. Professional fees is the audit, utilities, we do owning the building over there, we have the responsibility for the utilities. And we've already mentioned the business retention and recruitment expense, which is the, what Mary and I talked about in, in order to recruit businesses. That's, in a nutshell, the operating budget that the board approved for the SEDF. And then we've also talked about the changes in the salaries and benefits that would be going forward for a three-staff foundation. And what we did there is we went out and, and did some research on looking at what other foundations are, how their staff for cities of similar size and a little bit smaller, a little bit bigger, and what the salaries were for those different economic development entities, whether they're a foundation or an authority or the Chamber of Commerce does it, whatever it is, we went out and looked at that in order to come up with some, the idea of how much is this going to cost to go through, to a three-person staff. There's the bottom line, total expenses of two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, nine-hundred dollars. Net income or loss, zero, is a nonprofit. We're not going to budget for a surplus. Obviously, we want to have a surplus in any year rather than a deficit, but we're not going to be budgeting for either a surplus or a deficit in this year. That's the budget, we've gone over the revenue, we've gone over the operating expenses, we talked some about the staffing model that would allow the foundation to expand its capabilities and basically, where does the funding come from? The current city contract, increase in the city contract and then going out to the private sector and raising the funds. And it's, it goes back to, do the, do the business entities, their leaders, do the, do the attorneys in town, do the dentists in town, do the doctors in town, do, do the people who live here and work here believe that this is worth investing in? We believe it is. We believe it's worth investing in economic development because you could go back and say, the old adage, "Which comes first, chicken or the egg?" Do you put economic development money out there that then is going to have a return and increase business, increase sales taxes, and then that's the money that's going to fund the water improvements and the street improvements and all of those other things? Or do you say, "No, we're going to put the money into the streets and the water and then whatever drops by on the interstate is what we're going to get." I can tell you which vision I prefer. I prefer going out there and making our own destiny happen rather than just whatever drops by on I-40.
Amen.
Be glad to answer any other questions about the, the budget particulars.
I would volunteer that all three of us would stand for any questions which might have. Now, this is a work session, just trying to gather information.
Right. And this would, Jim, with this, this is something that would come up through the budget process.
Sure, it'll be part of the oh-eight, oh-eight, oh-nine...
Sure, it'll be part of the oh-eight, oh-eight, oh-nine budget discussions, you bet.
But based on the ability for them to go forward, how would we do that?
Well, the council has the ability to supplement the budget at any time, if, say you would have that option this current budget year, I'm in this one avenue, if you so choose to do that.
Or is there an opportunity, I mean, as, we're looking at a partial year here, could we do part of it, not the whole thing, and maybe plan for the next cycle?
Yeah, where the money would come from is out of the third penny, because that's the way the, the thing was passed, the, where the percentages are essentially set by city council, except for the dedication to the police and fire.
Right.
The eights, the rest of it, the other seven eights, the percentages are set by the city council, so that would become out of the third penny.
Specifically five percent for economic development at this point.
Yes, but that was not part of the ordinance, I believe that's right, Mr. John. Yeah, so that, as I, as I remember the ordinance, as I've read the ordinance, the only stipulation, percentage stipulation was police and fire, everything else is up to the city commission in terms of how they distribute. Historically, since the passage of the third penny, economic development contribution has been five percent.
But it was set at that time?
Yes, sure it was, uh-huh, yeah.
If I may, we are not, at this point in time, asking for a supplement to the current year contract that ends June 30th. What we're, would like to request is that the city commission direct the city manager to begin the planning process of next year's budget by directing him to place a hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars for the city's next fiscal year in that budget as a priority.
Well, that's not an agenda item tonight, though.
Right, and, but you know what I'd like to see? I'd like to see a pledge of investment in our community by the private sector. I mean, we're, we're sitting here saying, "We'd like to believe that these people will invest X amount of dollars." I'd truly like to see a pledge of investment from our private sector.
A challenge pledge.
A challenge pledge, something, I mean, I'd like to see SEDF-
I can make one for you right now.
Well, we talk a lot about SEDF doing unit drives, and I've been at your meetings, like, "Oh, we don't want to do a unit drive, oh, we don't want to go back there." But you know what? I'd like to see that happen, because I would like to see us say, "Hey, Pam Stevens, are you gonna give a hundred dollars?"
Come on, step up.
Hey, and I will, hey, I'm gonna get in trouble for this, Mike Warwick, Bill Hazelwood, you know, Randy Parsons, are you gonna give a hundred dollars? I want to see this, instead of, "We think we can," the old, you know, little train guy, you know, "I think I can, I think I can, I think I can." Let's do it so that we can come into the budget year and say, "You know what? We can do this, and this is what the private sector's gonna do, in addition to just, you know, our standard people that are members of SEDF. This is what we're gonna do as a community, so that we as a commission can say, 'You know what? And this is what we're gonna do as a community.'"
We could, we could that start, potentially.
Does that make sense? You know? And that way, we have, we have, it's easier for us to swallow, looking at Joe Citizen out there and saying, "You know, I don't really care about Rosa Street, eek," which is gonna get us all in big trouble, "And we're not gonna fix Rosa Street, because you know what? We're gonna give this money to SEDF," which is not what any of us want to do. And that's kind of where we're at, we're gonna have to take money from some, so let's be a little more aggressive here, maybe.
And we can, and we can guarantee that if ninety-six thousand isn't raised in the next year by SEDF, that it won't be matched at the next bu, at the next budget cycle, I can tell you that already.
Exactly, and I mean, that's kind of where we're at.
But that's the negative side of it, let's go forward positively.
Yeah, let's be, let's be positive here, and let's be aggressive about, let's try to raise this money so that in the next, I hate to say this, three months, before we start into the budget year, that we really tru, truly have some numbers that we can work off of, instead of, "We think we can raise this type of money."
Well, what I can tell you is this, in, in my short existence here in the community, there's been two separate fund drives, and there has in fact been raised, the last time around, three-hundred thousand dollars.
Raise it.
Are you gonna give us three hundred? Are you gonna give us three hundred if we raise three hundred?
You know what? Raise it, and we'll talk about it.
Yeah, and, see, that's, that's one of the things that go with this.
And if you're not willing to raise it, then we can't give it to you.
Well, let me ask you-
That's kind of where we're at, because we can't take money from streets and water to just give to somebody for jobs. I mean, that's truly kind of what, when we're talking infrastructure, we're talking like three jobs. And I mean, the person that lives on a street that's bad, and the person who has bad tasting water, or the person that doesn't have water, they're not gonna understand that.
Only thing I can tell you is this, is that-
It's a balancing-
It is a balancing act, it is what I would also call a leap of faith on all sides in that we're not asking for any more money today, and we're asking for you to, in your budgeting process, which I know this is kind of the kickoff, if you will, for your budgeting process, we're asking you to hopefully direct Mr. Collard to start to include in his budget preparations a line item that would include the funding that we've asked for. As I talked earlier, we have a lot of work to do on our part, from the standpoint that we have to go to the Security Exchange Commission and ask for permission to do a unit drive, we have to organize our campaign, we have to change our bylaws, and when we go out and talk to these businesses, they likewise look at this group and the city of saying, "We are in fact taxpayers, and we do expect investment from the community, back into the community in the form of infrastructure." And many of the infrastructure projects we've talked about, and I'll just use as a quick example, would be the, the road, the, the extension of Union going up into the retail area where Walmart is at. Obviously, that was an excellent investment for the city to make, because that in turn helped drive sales tax dollars. So the same thing that we're talking about is, it is a collective effort. I feel very strongly that we have a plan that has universal acceptance by our board. We talked the other day about the fact that we have universal expectations, that our board members will in fact be unitholders, they already are, and we're asking for those to dig down and put in more money, but we're also asking for a, if you will, starting down the road of a pledge from you guys, that you support those efforts at the same time while we're out raising the money. Now, what we can't do, I don't think, is we can't wait until, let's say it takes us till July 1st to raise the money. It's too late then to come back and say, "Well, will you increase your budget for the two thousand nine, two thousand ten budget?" I believe the way I understand your process. So, again, it is a mutual thing, where I believe, for an example, that we're, we're asking for basically ninety-six thousand dollars of increase in funding on an annualized basis going forward. We're basically saying, "We believe that over the next five years, we'll be able to raise ninety-six thousand dollars a year." Now, like I said, we're gonna start immediately on that process, and personally, I feel very strongly that this is something that, because the board has a plan, we have a strategic plan, because we have a budget we've put together, because we'll have commitment from the private sector, and hopefully we'll have additional commitment from the public sector, we'll make this work together.
I think that's wonderful.
Well, that's, that's all I can say, I mean, that's, we're all volunteers, and that's how we go forward.
But I also think that we, as a commission, need to understand, in this next budget year, our employees are not going to receive that big of a raise, we as a city are probably not going to be able to add any additional employees. And if we can, I think that's great, but I think from talking to Dr. Collard the other day, we're in a position where we are probably not going to be able to add any additional jobs, no more firemen, no more policemen, no inspectors, no code enforcement people, that we really have to think about this seriously if we're going to give money to another entity. And I don't mean this bad towards SEDF, but to take our funds and transfer them to another entity to take what's one job, which, I'm the first one to say, Pat McCormick's way overworked and way underpaid for what she does, but to add three jobs, we really have to think this through, and not that we can't do it, but I go back to the, we need to put in motion the city's support and the city's gumption of, "We're going to fund this SEDF through the private sector." And so I'm not saying you have to have all the money in line, I, I think it's just a matter of, let's see it starting to evolve and starting to happen, because we're gonna have a hard time telling our taxpayers, "Oh, by the way, you don't get another city inspector, you don't get another fireman, you don't get another policeman, but oh, by the way, we're gonna put an administrative assistant over here and this and that." I just-
We very much understand.
And I'm not being negative, I'm just saying.
That's a different pot of money, the thing that would give would be streets and water and things like that, it wouldn't be people, because it's a different pocket.
Okay, but you know what? People don't understand that.
Well, it's time for us to educate them and let them know, because we know, and we have to let them know, where the direction is here, you can't, you gotta take care of people, but you have to look a little bit to the future, we got kids to worry about for the future. So you, you have to do both, and that's the fine line that we have to work with all the time, is looking at the future-
Okay, but you know what?
As well as taking care of the present.
But Mr. and Mrs. Smith that work at the Family Dollar Store don't necessarily benefit from us giving a hundred percent increase to SEDF, whereas Mills Machine might.
I doubt it.
You know, if, but, but you know what? I mean, it's just a matter of, we have to think this stuff through, and, and I'm, and I'm not saying that it's a bad thing, I just need to see us, let's, let's as a community make a commitment to giving. Let's, let's think this through, let's not take this lightly, and we don't have to vote on this tonight, I'm just like, let's just start this in motion, maybe this is where we need to start the momentum of reaching out and touching individual business owners, not big business, not big banks, not people that have more than twenty employees, let's start reaching out there, and not just automatically, "Okay, well, we'll give you this money," and, okay.
But we need to, but we need to tell the whole story, and the whole story is, the reason that we can't hire extra employees to do some of the other things is because our retail sales base is not growing at the rate where we can be adding some of those positions that we all would love to have. And we cannot continue to give raises above where the retail rate is going up, and that's eating on some of those potential employee positions that we could be hiring. And until we increase our retail tax base, we cannot, we will not have the, the space in our budget to add additional-
And part of that is going back to where we brought in Buxton and-
That's right.
-wanting to do, you know, a survey, and, I mean, this is all part of a great big picture, so I don't think, and we're not attacking SEDF, it's just a matter, we have to see the big picture on, where are we gonna go? And how do we get everyone involved, small people, big people?
And, because this is a public-private partnership, I would not say that the city is the one that's supporting all of the additional staff in SEDF, but I think this, I, I think that, that one of the priorities we as a commission has got to have is to, is to increase our sales tax collections, and if that means we have to increase the base, what, how are we gonna do that? And we need to do that in a structured, organized manner, not just willy-nilly, and we need to do it within the organization that has the skills to do that, and I think we have to back that, and if that's the cart before the horse, I mean, I just think we have got to go after that right now. Now is the opportunity, the SEDF has said they will step up, they will take that charge, it's part of the expanded responsibilities when it came out in the strategic planning session, and, and I think that's where it needs to be.
Okay, but you know what? Tell us what you're gonna do on retail, because that hasn't come out. What position is going to be? What position is gonna be funded by the city that's gonna deal with retail?
Well, I think it would be fair to say that, I mean, it's just like any project, that all of those positions would be utilized to carry forward the entire plan, if you will, strategic plan of the SEDF, the program that we laid out, and I think it's like anything, is, you know, you've got, there's time to do each one of those various projects, but that is very much incorporated within this plan of having the staff it will take to carry forward the retail initiative and the retail strategy.
So what, and I guess my concern is, is that what, within SEDF, what has strategically, and in the past, historically been industrial-based, now SEDF is going to expand that industrial base into a retail-based forum for SEDF?
That's exactly right.
Is that right?
It is talking about not only just having an industrial job creation arm, it also talks about retail development, and that's included as one of the key factors, is that we know it's gonna be-
Right, so SEDF is kind of changing their mode.
We are.
So, you know what, and I don't know how many people have been up in the little boardroom, but you look around and you see all the pictures of, you know, Shawnee Mills, Central Plastics, Will Green, those pictures, the, the face of SEDF is going to change?
Oh, absolutely, I mean, from the standpoint that it's been about job creation, and, you know, there's, there's industrial jobs, there's also service and retail jobs. I mean, everyone sitting at this table, you know, earns or living from doing some type of job, it may be an industrial, making a widget, as you said, or it may in fact be providing a service, but we definitely have a component of saying, "Look, if we have more salaries, more jobs in the community, they have more retail disposable income to spend, we hope we can attract additional areas within the retail sector that we're not currently serving, that we're having people go outside the community to get, that those services could be bought locally, and therefore would raise your sales tax dollar revenues that you're receiving."
What if we do nothing? What if we do nothing? We don't give you any money, where are you going?
Well, I guess from, from the standpoint, depending if you say no money, I mean, you've been contributing a hundred thousand dollars a year.
The regular hundred thousand, we just keep you on, on the same line, what happens then?
I think there would be efforts to go forward and raise additional private dollars anyway, because, you know, I, I think the business community is saying, "Look, you know, this has got to be done." Hopefully, it's a public-private partnership, you know, I think there would be initiatives to go forward and ra, and continue to raise private dollars, as there has been going back to nineteen fifty-eight. Would it be fast enough and could make a difference? That's always the question, Commissioner, is whether or not it could be done. But I, I think that it's been, our general consensus is that we have to pick up the pace, because one of the things that's happening right now is you're not seeing your sales tax revenue grow at what you're seeing happen in other communities that are making these type of investments.
By comparison, you look at Midworth City, look at Moore and Norman, what's going on I-35, and what we're doing here on I-40, Midworth City and I-40, they expanded, they knocked down a few things, they ruffled a few feathers, they had to deal with a few situations. If we don't do, if we're, if we're not active, and I believe our citizens of this community understand, that we're like, we're in a drought, so to speak, we're maintaining, but Jimmy Johnson used to say, "Either you get better or you get worse," and if we're gonna continue doing what we did yesterday, do that tomorrow, we're not getting better. And I also think there's some numbers from Vanguard today, their average salary of their employees is not something that really would fit Shawnee for a group of people wanting to move into Shawnee. These folks are gonna be moving here, or their job is gonna be here, or we're gonna be able to house them in our community, or will they live somewhere else and just commute here? We need to set up, we need this money to move, actually, so that we can do what we need to do. I understand taking the chance. Oklahoma City right now has to deal with the, do they want to increase their tax, roll over their tax, or bring in an NBA team? If the NBA team comes to Oklahoma City, what's gonna happen here in Shawnee? Are we gonna be left out there in the cold because we're worried about a few dollars? We can fix everything, every pothole, there are many, we can fix every pothole in Shawnee over the next thirty-six months by having a great investment in our community. The retail survey is very important, increasing SEDF is very important, I believe that we will see a major increase in things taking place here in Shawnee. Oklahoma's growing, we don't need to be sitting too far backwards, I appreciate everything that, all the action that we have going on in northwest part of town, but Shawnee's gonna grow more than just that northwest part of town with everything that's- that's going on around here. But we're gonna have to stick our necks out, so to speak, and make an investment in our community. But as we make the investment in the community and make our pledges, I guarantee everybody else is gonna step up. I have a thing here, it says, you know, we need a list of all businesses making personal phone calls and asking each person to commit to a hundred dollars a year, five hundred dollars a year, whatever it may be. But when we all do it together, we're gonna grow together. We can, we can fix all the streets, all the lights, all the problems that we have, but it's gonna take us working together. And the biggest part that we have is educating the people of Shawnee. I don't say a lot of words. I don't believe. I sit here and I believe the people who tell me that they appreciate what I'm doing as I sit here appreciate my vote. And whenever I vote, I'm gonna vote for what's gonna be right tomorrow. They're always asking me to explain everything to them. When they do, I don't mind talking to them, explaining what we're doing and educating on, on the issues. Trying to educate everybody tonight is not gonna be the, the most beneficial thing. But we need to find more people out there who's gonna be willing to jump on board and to push for what we need economically here in our community. So I appreciate, you know, the, the game plan that you have, I appreciate all the information that I read over it, and, you know, like I said, I had a couple of questions, and heck, we answered most of them, and I appreciate it. But we do need to step forward and move forward.
Chuck Skilling's had a comment, he's went way to the face of me.
Maybe they will clarify something. Right now, the current earmark for the sales tax for economic development yields how much money annually?
About 225,000.
So if in fact, that money's already earmarked for economic development, if in fact, we were given 196,000 dollars that we're asking for, the money doesn't come from streets, it doesn't come from water, it doesn't come from employee salary, it comes from money that is already earmarked for economic development. Is that correct, State?
That's correct.
Uh, wait a minute, I'm, I'm not understanding your question. The 100,000, that's correct. The additional amount there would be an allocation of the third penny, is that what you're saying?
No, no, what he doesn't know is that there are other economic development, uh...
Demands.
Uh, transfers or, um, contracts, monies that come out of that 225,000.
It's a zero-sum game.
The 225,000...
It's spoken for.
Is allocated.
Yes, sir. Of which 100,000 goes over to SEDF.
But theoretically, the decision could be to take the money from somebody else that's allocated for, not city streets, not water, not employees, not...
No, that's always a choice.
Conceivably, yes. That's certainly possible.
Conceivably.
Conceivably, you can do what they're talking about doing within the earmark of the sales tax.
Right. By taking it from other entities.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, I don't know what they are.
Yeah.
But if you stay in an economic development environment, it doesn't have to come out of streets.
Well, one last statement.
That's true, but other entities would do without.
Uh, back to the real world, if this was a ballot initiative, if we were to ask the taxpayers for this extra 100,000 or whatever we felt we need, bump it up another 100 or two, you know what the vote would be, you know what the results would be, and we have to represent the taxpayers. If I get a, I guarantee I'm gonna get some phone calls as soon as this hits the papers. I think we, we owe a lot of thought to it, and it's gonna be in the budget process, that's where we're gonna hammer it out.
Timmy said it right, and I, you know, you know, all of us know here, before you even were in this position, and now that you're in this position, you know a whole lot more than what you did about how things work. I mean, you have to. And there's a lot of people out here, the rank and file, that don't understand, and some may never understand, and that's okay. You know, everyone's got their own demands in their own little world. Sometimes people can't think, can't vision, you know, have, visualize the future, don't have vision. Not everyone can do that. Everyone sometimes, you know, can see just so far. We have to have vision. We have to be able to, to help the future happen. These guys are willing to step up and make the future happen for our kids and for other citizens here in Shawnee and people that are gonna move here to Shawnee. You know, we, it's our responsibility to explain why we make those decisions, and sometimes there are people that will never understand. But we have to make the right decision because we've been elected to look for the future and invest in this community and build a future for our kids and for other people that are gonna move here in the future that make this community.
But in turn, Chuck, just because something's brought to us doesn't mean that it's the right decision or that other people who are the rank and file don't know any better or that we're any brighter, and I'm the last person to say I don't understand everything, and I consider myself to be, you know, somewhat intelligent, but it doesn't mean I understand everything. We're not the experts, and just because something's brought before us doesn't mean that's the right answer. So I think it's just truly something that, this is great, I think we have to look at it, I think we have to digest it, I think we have to talk about it, I think we have to fully consider all the options in the budget process and think about it in comparison to everything else. And I think we've asked really good questions today that maybe you all need to go back and answer. You know, like, maybe start your unit fun drive.
We, we intend to, we intend to. I might just go on as to say is that we really do believe, from the board's point of view, we know, again, we're all volunteers, and we think we...
Why we are.
Like you are, we're well-paid for being volunteers.
Exactly.
Uh, we believe we understand what our task is, we take that seriously. We also understand very well that you all have competing interests that you have to deal with. I'd also like to tell you tonight, we'll come back to you in the month of February, I believe, and deliver an annual report of how we've taken the money that, that you have provided us and how we've spent that, and hopefully how we've done good things with that. But we take our, our role seriously, I know as you do. We wanna thank you for your past support. We hope that you'll be willing to continue that. We're asking you to increase it based upon this plan that we have, and that's all we can ask. And we certainly understand the competing interests that you all have to deal with. So, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Inspector.
Can I also say to, to what Chuck Skilling's pointed out, I mean, if you look at our budget, honestly, there's probably about $60,000 in the Economic Development Fund that may not be asked for again next year. I mean, it's not the expo, and it's not sister cities, and it's not our contracts, it's not, that's not what it is. It's some one-time transfers or expenditures that we had. So there, there is some room, um, that's, this is just expenses that we chose, that we, as a board, chose to do this year. So, a portion of it may be there already.
And Pam, I agree with you, we're not, I don't claim to be an expert either, I'm just, the point I was trying to make is we, we're provided more information than the average citizen to make those decisions, and it's our responsibility to explain what we know based on that information to as many people that will ask or listen to us.
But I think it's important for the people to know that we don't just sit up here and go, okay, boom, we agree with you, okay.
We will discuss this a whole lot more, I'm sure. Okay, thank you, and we'll move to number four, discussion and consideration of providing 125,000 dollars for infrastructure to match an EDA grant for Vanguard stimulation services.
I'll try not to cough. My voice is there in what it was Wednesday at board meetings, so don't go away, Mary, I might have to have your help again. Well, while we're here today, I would like to introduce Carol Newman, who is Chief Operating Officer for Vanguard, and Dave Fouchet, who's Vice President of Waveland. They're in our audience tonight, so they're here to, uh, just give you, I, I put in all this information into your packet. You have a copy of some of the bullet points of Vanguard's proposal from EDA that we submitted that coestimated on our behalf in the breakout. Also, the cost estimates that John Crowe Wiki did for me as far as infrastructure costs, and they are estimates. And also, a letter, we did the closing on January the 8th, that we had set aside 125,000 in escrow, just, just in case we might need it. But just to give a little bit of information on Vanguard, I hadn't gone the way through, we did the groundbreaking on the 17th. This is a 65 million dollar investment into our community that they trusted us, that they, Vanguard's willingness to make such a significant investment in this community tells that it has confidence and trust in Shawnee. A little bit about Vanguard, the company specializes in designing and implementing fracture stimulations to enhance the recovery of oil and natural gas in shale reservoirs. And the commitment that Vanguard is making in rural Oklahoma is only, that only affects the immediate area, it also energizes the economy of the entire region. The project that diversifies the economy of the region by creating a local value-added market for the region's natural gas and petroleum producers. And the primary benefit of the project will impact the city of Shawnee if the stanchions spill over to the Potawatomi County. In addition, there will be some benefits spill over into the surrounding counties. We did an Economic Development Administration grant for, to help on the infrastructure cost, we, and those costs were submitted, and the total grant project that we submitted was 650,000, and that is all broken out. In the city's part of that, the tentative commitment is 125,000, that's part of the match. And we were, when we're asking that the city commission approve that. I know that Jim Collard also had Dr. Stead do an impact analysis of what that had, 125,000, and also the investment in Vanguard is doing for the community.
So when the citizens ask us, why invest 125,000, we can say that the investment this company is making into our community will be paid back to us and that we, we will benefit from it.
With the number, with jobs and payroll.
That's right. So we can answer those kinds of questions. And that was part of the one-time money that we spent in economic development, so that we have some of these studies, some of these programs that we can run an analysis to say, is this a good investment of taxpayer money?
That is correct.
Yeah, and very, very definitively, I mean, quantitatively, we can show that we get more than the 125 back in, in direct economic...
Is there any in-kind in that?
There'll be some in-kind as far as engineering, in-house engineering that the city will do as far as...
But we still have the 125 in addition to that.
That, right, 125,000, yeah. But in-kind, there's no, there's no act, I mean, there's, you could put a dollar value to it, but it will be done in...
It doesn't count as a match.
No, no.
I have a question, Pat.
Yes, sir.
In your, on your first page here, you have the city of Shawnee has a tentative commitment to the 125K for infrastructure.
At that time, right.
My question is, this is a no-brainer, really. When a business like this comes into town, we have to supply them the water lines, utility lines. Who gave tentative commitment?
I indicated, I thought that the city might be willing to put 100 and a quarter in, and at the time of...
Just a point of information, why it was worded that way.
Yeah.
Why wasn't this part of the discussion with Vanguard? They should have been told upfront that we can provide an infrastructure.
Well, no, I, I can put that part. Normally, I would have, when a project of this size, you know, the investment, the building land, building equipment, jobs, and knowing that the typical economic development one-on-one is to provide infrastructure to these, for these type of projects. But the only incentive that we do have, when you were talking about incentives, is to provide infrastructure spacing. But what happened was that Phil Thompson was, I had talked to him about doing industrial access roads funds, see what I would need to do to get that process going, and he came down to my office at the same time Wayne Manley did. And Wayne said, I think this would qualify for an EDA, let's do all the work on it and get it going and everything. And my thought process at that time was, boy, if we could get this down through EDA, this would save the city this amount of money, and 125,000 dollars is really a minimal investment into the project. And that's how it all, that's how it all came about.
That's why it was tentative agreement, it was a 50/50 deal.
Yeah, Pat and I talked about what the package could conceivably look like. Obviously, it's still subject to city commission approval.
Well, my concern being that, say, in the future, businesses want to open up, they'll look back at this, they want to come to Shawnee and say, well, we gotta get past the city manager, we gotta get past SEDF board, we gotta get past the commission, just to get infrastructure.
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement. That is process.
I guess my concern is that we shouldn't have a groundbreaking and then later have something like this coming before us to say, 125,000.
But, no, we have that, but...
T tentative commitment needs to be, we need to commit.
You're right.
Because what, what happens if we all sit here and say, hey, you know what, the seven of us say, we don't want to do this? And then we've got Vanguard who's already broken ground and...
I, I think that's a valid point, and Pat and I have also talked about, go ahead.
And we talked about this. I mean, we're not going to let a business like this go away from us, but let's just in the future, let's not just assume that the city commission's going to agree.
They've already signed dotted line, now we have to sign it.
Right. We have no other choice.
And normally, we would have, I would have just come straight to Jim Collard, but the way it happened, we thought it would be in a faster timeframe, too, on this EDA grant and federal government.
Mr. Collard can encumber 125,000, and he knows that.
The bigger issue is the 650,000. What if it was 650 and there was no EDA grant?
And I think that's what's important, is that we're not going to let this go by the wayside, but in the future, we need to ensure that truly encumbrances for the city, come before the city, before the fact as opposed to after the fact.
Agreed.
Absolutely.
Because we don't want to be in a situation where we as a city are encumbered to our detriment for future growth, because all these businesses have invested, I mean, and that would be like a woo-hoo kind of day if we were in that position, but let's just not, let's not make this a practice that we encumber funds after the fact.
And that was, it was listed as a tentative amount, but the, Pat and I have also talked about if the physical impact tool that we use for Dr. Sneed has what's known as an input sheet, and it asks a series of questions for everyone, every business that would be seeking a public assistance, be it defined as SEDF, the city, state, or federal government. And again, Pat, I think that we, you know, we have visited about that, and it's pretty straightforward in terms of the number of jobs, capital investments, so on and so forth. They could fill that out right off the bat.
The importance of that is, we're gonna do that on everyone that comes and asks for public assistance, we're gonna do that very much upfront, instead of wasting time and taxpayer dollars in negotiations for entities that don't want to provide that information. Is that correct?
Right.
And then if you don't, and I'm not gonna say no, but we recently had this, Linda's laughing now, she knows, but we recently had an entity that didn't want to provide us with this, and we went into negotiations, and we all know who it is, Acorn, that didn't want to provide the information, and we spent an awful lot of taxpayer time and dollars trying to negotiate something that didn't pan out. And so now in the future, if you don't want to provide us this information upfront, we're not going to willing to deal with you. And I think that's wonderful, and I think that's great on the part of Dr. Collard, I think that's the part, great on the part of you, that if you're not willing to provide us with what we need as a city, then we're not gonna play. Get out of our sandbox and go to someone else's.
This also allows us, and really you're phrasing it the same, you're making the same statement, you know, it allows us to deal with serious players.
Absolutely.
You know, and, and that, it really speaks to the quality of the recruitment, and frankly, it saves Pat time, too, for that matter. That, that's really true. If we had used this methodology with the other project you alluded to, yeah, we could have saved a lot of time.
Absolutely.
That's a valid point.
I have a, I have a couple of questions, and I brought this up at CoEd after our SEDF meeting, I kind of got Greg Clifton and Wayne, but, and confirmed that the governor did say that the Oklahoma Department of Transportation was gonna give 250,000, not 200,000, wondering if our commitment might be a little less, if they're gonna give more money. How's that work?
No, this was done before Phil Thompson increased it by 50,000.
So where's that 50,000 go?
It's going, going to industrial access road.
Okay.
So the estimate is different than...
Yeah.
So I don't understand if this is a total commitment, why we're having to give 125 if they're giving an extra 50 towards that project as a total.
My understanding that the first estimate was different than the current estimate, is, am I on the right track there?
That is correct. And I also told Jim that I would also go to the county if I needed to see if that cost could be split to also.
For 125?
Yes. Yes, in the city and the county.
Can that happen?
I've not met with this county, yes.
Good luck.
But I've talked to them. Why, I don't, but no.
Nice.
I am.
I'd like to expand your question a little bit here on page, second page of this. Here it says, ODOT's conditions are funding guaranteed contingent upon EDA funds, otherwise immediately available. And the city has no contingency on that $125.
No, I'm for sure Secretary Thompson would not have made that commitment, that $250,000 from the governor if it hadn't been a solid commitment.
Okay. Well, I mean, it wasn't really directed towards you, it was directed towards the city manager. Should we ask for the same kind of contingency?
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not checking what you're telling me.
On this page here, ODOT is guaranteeing a contingent upon EDA funds. Now, if they don't get EDA funding, is the city going to be responsible for the whole 650?
Oh, that was never contemplated.
No.
Okay.
Good question, but that was never contemplated. Our total commitment, again, as proposed as part of this package, was $100 and a quarter total.
Well, this is just a proposal anyway.
Yes, sir. Well, it was the grant application that went into EDA.
So could we say up to $125,000 if the county will?
Sure.
You know, get some funds.
Absolutely.
I, I've had to.
ODOT pans out.
I'm used to piecemealing things together in my job, so.
Let's pursue every.
Yeah, we should have, we should have a CYA in there somewhere.
The other, the other question I have is, on the administrative expenses, it has $10,000. I'm kind of curious, who's getting those administrative expenses? Do you know?
Let's see that.
That's on the second page, or whatever, third page.
Oh, yeah.
Last page.
Yeah.
$10,000 in administrative expenses.
Does that include any, like, surveys and legal work?
Surveys, legal works, survey legal works, environmental, anything that.
AIS maybe.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure it's not another agency.
No, it's not.
Taking a cut off of their.
No, trust me. I'd be in line if that was the case.
Like, okay, where's our part?
Yeah, no, I would have been in front. Jim Stewart's back there?
Yeah, that's his legal work.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you making all that money?
No.
I was trying to get paid for some of all this volunteer.
No, that's what that is. That is correction, that is what that is.
Okay. All right, that was mine.
Good question.
My questions. Also, with my understanding was, I know Carol had looked at this previously, and potentially, this number is larger than what I understood that you, your projection was. The $650,000, you had a lower number initially when you looked at what potentially would it cost for utilities, is that, is that correct?
We have slightly, slightly less, but there's a change.
Okay.
I would say 558.
Five, 558, you think? Okay, so.
Instead of 588.
Okay.
So what is staff's recommendation about where this funding comes from?
I was drawing a note to myself to that very thing.
Bill Sheldine.
Um, well.
Go ahead.
In, in the past, we, sometimes we've, you know, water projects come out of water fund, and street projects come out of street funds, and I did that calculation.
Will this come out of a surplus?
Our fund balance?
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm thinking about, the splitting between the funds.
What are the fund balances? Do we have fund balance in SMA to?
Some of it.
My calculation is 57,500 out of SMA and 67,500 out of streets.
Yeah, I think that's a fair split.
If it costs us $125.
If it costs us $125.
That's right.
So, I mean, it's not quite 50/50, but just based on the size of the projects and John's estimates initially.
That's right.
So do we have 57.5 out of fund balance of SMA?
There would be, it would be in the fund balances, yes, ma'am.
We do have that?
They'd be okay with that.
Do we have an additional 67,000 on a fund balance of streets?
Yes, we would have it in there.
Because we've taken something out of.
We have taken some of it, and all of it, all has been allocated yet, huh? What?
Just recently, yes. Okay. So if we make a motion, I guess then you'll come back with the budget adjustments next time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We, I thought this was agenda item to approve or disprove it tonight.
It says, discuss and consider.
Discussion, discuss and consider.
Discuss and consider.
Right.
But I'm thinking of a motion, and how detailed that motion can be about where the funds need to come from. We need to have that discussion about whether or not we do, you know, sewer and water lines out of SMA and streets out of our street fund.
Right now, it's a contingency offer. We make a motion, make it a final offer to supply.
No, we need to move the funds so that they're available. To encumber. To encumber the funds, there you go.
Do we have to do that tonight? We can't do it tonight.
Yeah, we can.
I know they want to move, and we're on a short timeline, they're ready to do some business, break some ground.
And, yeah, I mean, we can also add to the motion that, you know, Pat makes a formal request from other entities.
Right.
You know, so that we know that that's happened, too. Sure. To share in this.
Right.
Keep in mind, the foundation has also committed $125,000 plus, and our board meeting, if you'll remember, we committed proceeds from the sale of land if we needed to, so.
Okay, back up, say it again. The foundation has already.
We have, in case something, in case something didn't follow through, or somewhere tonight it didn't work out, that we have $125,000, that we have an escrow from the sale of the land.
So SEDF does have funds that they can help contribute towards this $125,000, but you'd rather not? Which is fair, but I'm just, I'm just making sure.
Do you want to loan it to us?
Do have some funds. Okay, now Chuck's shaking his head, no. We do, or we don't?
You have to understand how this is.
Okay, because we're talking about funds from the sale of real estate.
We escrow some funds for the sale of the real estate, just to be able to get through closing, so that Vanguard understood that the commitment was there to have the funds available to the EDA grant. Because we could, I mean, Jim Stewart and I were the only ones there, we couldn't, we knew we couldn't encumber the city commission, but we need to get the closing so that they can move on.
Okay.
We, we did that with the expectation, quite frankly, that the city was going to come forward with this project. The funds from.
Okay. And I'll, and I'll ask the nasty question. What, what do you believe the city could come with, the $125,000 club? We're like strapped with cash.
I understand strapped with cash, I also understand, as you said at the beginning of this discussion, we can't afford to let this get out.
Okay, so that was just like a leap of faith on your part?
I guarantee.
And I'm okay with that. Because Jim Stewart said the city's going to come up with the money.
But that being said, we also understand as economic development group, that we need to take those funds from the proceeds of the sale of that land and buy more land so we can perpetuate economic development in this community.
Okay.
We spend it all for infrastructure, we'll have no reinvestment to be made, so.
And that's fair, I just wanted to make sure that we all understood that, like, we don't have, you all don't have $125,000 just sitting out there going, oh, we just don't want to spend our money.
No.
No, we committed $50,000 to the airport, no.
They get those 50.
And $50,000 of that's been committed to the airport, and you all have intentions for that money, other than we just don't want to spend our money on this.
No, and if I had it, I would have.
When do you expect to get an answer on the EDA grant?
You know, the federal government, they move pretty slow.
Pardon?
You know, the federal government, they don't move as fast.
After they start breaking ground.
Yeah, but I've been, Nate Webb, Mary Phyllis, Chief of Staff, keeps an update on a weekly basis on it, and it's made the, it's made the next level, and it looks very favorable.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm looking at the agenda item, the way it's worded, consider providing $125K for infrastructure to match an EDA grant for Vanguard. We just make a motion to, we'll do it when they get the EDA funding.
I'm going to say up to.
Contingent upon that.
Up to contingent upon.
Yeah. What I want to do is get it all rolling.
Is that a motion?
And I want to ask the question then, since I might stir up all kinds of stuff this evening, what happens if the grant doesn't come through?
Then we pay the whole 650.
Then we'll be back discussing this again.
Yeah, I'll be back again.
I mean, is the grant going to go through?
It's, yes, they feel very, they feel very, they feel like it is.
Jim Stewart, is this a leap of faith on that part? That the grant goes through?
That the, that the grant will go through?
Yes.
If it doesn't go through.
He's like, don't put me on the spot. I mean, I guess my concern is that we're matching something with the understanding that a grant's going to go through, I mean, do we?
Can I express an opinion on that?
Please, help us.
This is a good, this is a good project, it's the kind of project that EDA looks like, looks at pretty favorably. There's a, there's a lot of local support, both at the state and local level, the city level. The business itself has already put up the money, it's not, it's not a shell game like a lot of these grants try to be sold for. I think that, given the nature of the EDA, the Economic Development Administration, the way they make these kinds of decisions, and frankly, the fact that the city has not been to the EDA for years.
The last one that I did, the last one I did was for one point, that I did was for $1.5 million to expand the north side of waste treatment facility to help expand.
How many years ago was that, Pat?
That was done in 96, the first time I did that one.
That's a long time since the city has gone into, gone into the EDA for a project. The, again, the numbers look good, the fit looks good.
Yes.
Is there a guarantee? Certainly not. It's federal government. Is this the kind of project that the EDA generally likes? Yes.
And I guess my concern is here, you know, this is the first time we as the commission have heard anything about Vanguard, and all of a sudden, we're being asked to give large sums of money. Maybe we ought to talk about this stuff earlier.
During the budget process.
No, when the deal happens.
During the discussion process, other than, oh, by the way, we as a city have made all these decisions, and, oh, guess what? Y'all pay this money.
Here's, here's the bill. Here's the bill.
I think that's, I think that's a valid point, and that'll be the case this point forward.
I have heartburn with us being the last to know how we're going to spend the city's money. And I don't care who it is that sits on this commission that helped make those decisions, we should be the last to know. And of course, we're going to make this happen because this is good for our city, but that's not the way we do business around here. And if it has been in the past, we're going to change it now, because we're not going to do business this way. And at some point in the future, if we do business this way, you're going to get a negative vote. So whoever's sitting up here that thinks this is the way we do business.
No, no, don't look over here, because.
Well, I'm just saying.
This came to us just recently, too, so.
Wherever it comes.
Let me back.
At some point, someone's going to be told, no, this is not the way we're going to do business.
No, you're right.
We're not going to be the last to know.
Had the city nor the foundation ever promised us that either the grant didn't come through, or that the city didn't come through. I mean, that was, that, that was not a condition of us coming to you.
Perfect.
It's a nice thing to have happen, we appreciate the help, but Pat never said he was going to have, nobody in the city ever said the grant was going to come through, we all think that that grant was going to come through, might not, it doesn't.
But Pam's point is the fact that, when the grant application was made, we should have been informed at that point, and.
If we were a match.
If we were going to have to put some skin in.
No, and we're not being negative towards you, we're going to, I'm being negative towards, you know, we're shown here a piece of paper that says tentative commitment of...
Six figures?
Yeah, of six figures. I mean, that's, you know, I'm sorry, I'm going to pick on Jim Stewart back there, but tentative commitment of dad to buy a $40,000 car, you know what, dad's going to say no.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's the way it works, and that's not the way the city's going to do business. We are not going to be told what we're going to pay for, and I don't mean that negatively towards Vanguard, and I absolutely, I, I don't want you to think that. It's just it, this is the way over time things are done, and we need to understand we're going to do business differently. Let's talk about it from the beginning, let's not have some of us, some entities making decisions and then bringing it to us and saying, oh, by the way, we need to pay for this.
That's, the point is taken, and the process will not proceed that way. We're cool with that.
And this is not anything negative towards Vanguard, because, boy, we want you guys here, we want to help you out.
And let me, let me back up.
It's just, it's kind of.
Let me back up. We had a meeting in December the 20th, and Wayne Manley, Todd Pauly, Jim Collard, and myself, and Greg Clifton was there, and they sat down, this is the first that we had seen of this gymnast, and said this would be, the $125 would be what the city, which is standard when you do an EDA, that would come into effect on the, and that's when, that's the first that I knew about, it's the first that you had knew about.
Well, this is the first I knew about it when it came down on our agenda, so, I mean, I'm not being negative towards anybody involved, and we want to support this, it's like, let's just talk about it sooner.
Process.
And the board, and it, and EDA was, and it was all, I mean, nothing was ever kept. But no, I told, and I told Jim, right, and I told Jim that I was going to the county so they'd get it split.
Linda?
Make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, make a motion to provide a total up to $125,000 for infrastructure to match an EDA grant for Vanguard stimulation services. My motion would include 57.5 to be matched from the SMA and 67.5 to be matched from streets.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Just a second, say, say that again.
Well, I.
Is that necessary to get the figures?
Yeah, we have, we have to encumber, we do, and, and that's, and we can discuss whether or not you think SMA ought to pay their portion. I, I just totaled John's 118, 155, and 315, and did a percentage, 46% SMA and 54%, that's what I got. If I'm incorrect, you can correct it on our budget adjustments. Because that's our match to these three. I did 118 and 155 and 315, and the 118 and 155 I got as 46% of the total.
I'm sorry, I'm just not checking, where are you calling?
This right here.
Oh, okay.
Is that correct?
Thank you. We can do it that way, that's fine.
Would you rather just do 50/50? No, I just can't do the estimate.
It can't take another hit.
It just can't take.
Not that kind of hit.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, and as part of my motion, I would like to also encourage Pat to go out and
And as part of my motion, I would like to also encourage Pat to go out and try to get other entities to partner with us on the 125. It's in the works.
Okay.
Okay?
That's good, that's good.
That's it.
That's a good question.
Wait a minute, you want to run that past me again?
It's a good motion.
You want her to go out and solicit funding towards the...
I want her to make official requests at the other entities that she talked about to help us with the 125.
And I already have, it's in motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
That's it?
So it's an request from us, basically.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. Other discussion. May I have my tape? All real quickly.
Aye.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Schran.
Aye.
O'Neill.
Aye.
O'Neill.
Aye.
Aye.
No, she cares, thank you.
Yeah. Then we need to have an agenda item on our SMA agenda next time to do that.
Probably the supplemental budget.
Okay.
David, you're good?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That wasn't, that wasn't hard, was it?
Oh, that was just like having wisdom people. Number five, economic development strategy for the city of Shawnee.
I thought that's what we've been taught to do.
Yeah. Really, I mean, we could...
Are we going to, are we, were we going to discuss projects like the airport?
It has its own meaning, I think, yeah.
Does it? Good.
It does.
Are we done?
Everybody's deserting it. They got their money, they're going to run.
That's funny. The economic development strategy really breaks down into a few different pieces. One, of course, is our support, direct financial support to the SEDF, whose focus primarily has been in industrial recruitment. The second, of course, is our building of infrastructure. When we decide to widen a road, that's subject, that is part of the economic development effort. Yeah, but again, we make strategic decisions on roadway projects. For instance, Kickapoo Street, I think very legitimately needs to be understood within a context of improving traffic flows and the impact it has on retail. The support that we provide to the airport is an example. It was mentioned earlier that of the allocation into economic development from that third penny, only $100,000 goes into the SEDF at this time. We also put money into downtown Shawnee. We put money over to the Expo as an example, there is a $50,000 allocation this time. We put money into airport projects as part of the overarching economic development strategy. And speaking of the airport, and as many of you know, Rex Henon is now our airport manager, and the airport advisory board is very active right now, and has a number of plans to present to this board, sitting as the airport authority in the future, and they will have a work session in a few weeks specifically tied, that addresses that. So the, and then final, finally, the city's emphasis on retail. We have talked about a retail analysis, retail market analysis, that was originally proposed by the Buxton Group. I have finally written the document, submitted it to you all for your review, and when I get your comments back, then we will zap that out, and then I'll bring back the RFQ/RFPs for your consideration. So economic, a lot of times, cities consider community development and economic development as two different things, but even when you think about it, it really is one thing. And so as we, we generate revenues, we attempt to generate revenues, to pay for the services that the city, our citizens want in other areas, I mean, that's what sales tax does. It pays for everything from municipal pools to streets to police officers and so on. So all of it is linked together, and that's the reason these kinds of discussions frankly are helpful, and they serve as a laid-in to the budgeting meetings that we're going to survive in the next few months. So that is in essence an overview of the city's economic development strategy for you to consider. I'm not trying to superimpose anything, just kind of framing this part of the discussion, and I'd be happy to open it up for any comments.
We will be having a separate work session on the airport, and I would ask that the SEDF, SEDF members attend that one also, since that has been highlighted as, you know, an industry to really be aggressive in, and part of our discussion will be how to spend the few dollars we have there as potential matches for some activity out there too, so...
Yeah, that's really good. Phyllis, do you remember when that, what the date is on the airport?
February 11th.
Is it the 11th, February 11th? Thank you. So if you all could be there, thank you. It'll be here at 6:30. Thank you, that's a good point. So again, it's, it's all encompassing.
We won't discuss it here, but it has its own.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, administrative reports?
None.
Commissioners' comments?
I just have one. And I need to apologize for this. In my paperwork, I overlooked this request from the city manager in reference to this window, and I wasn't sure, because I understood that this was talked about back in the spring, but I'm certainly for any safety at all, so I don't know where that can be changed from my vote or whatever, but I want that to be recorded, that I simply overlooked it, that's my error.
You weren't here at the time of the budget, so I think it would be a legitimate extension if you wanted to stand.
Yeah, well, I, I'm, I'm for this. 100%.
So noted.
So noted?
We didn't interpret it negatively. We didn't interpret it negatively. Again, since you weren't here, it's part of the budgeting process.
Okay. Okay. Other comments? Otherwise, we will adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schran. Call roll, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Schran?
Aye.
O'Neill?
Aye.
O'Neill?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. Good.